So let's go ahead and call our Sandy City Council work session to order. Jeff, will you call the roll?
Yes, Councilor Pete's here. Councilor Smallwood.
Do we need to unmute?
No, you're.
Good one.
Here. Councilor Sheldon. Uh, Councilor Walker.
Here.
Councilor Axner.
Here.
Councilor Hokinson.
Here.
Mayor Polium.
Here. Well, it's so good to be here. Uh, welcome everybody to our first in-person council session then meeting uh for about a year and a half now.
So wow.
Round of applause. All right. Well, uh, with that, I'll start off doing a quick review of our council meeting uh meeting agenda for tonight. Uh, pausing for any questions anyone may have for staff or points of clarification. Start off, uh, is there any proposed changes to tonight's agenda? Yes, uh, Councilor Walker.
Um, so there was a question I had about the consent agenda, um, adding and I and I don't, I, I haven't seen the final agenda. Did that get changed to just kind of ask that one question about the Sandy Net Board?
Yes, we pulled it and put it under new business.
Okay. All right. I hadn't had a chance to look at the revised one. Uh, other than that, I'm good.
All right. Sam, good.
Mayor, yes, long in, oh, it's maybe ahead, but the consent agenda, I'd like to talk about the resolution uh twenty twenty-one seventeen. The Sandy Enterprise Zone, I think, okay, I don't know enough about it to have a report on the consent agenda. So if we could maybe just move it out.
Uh, do you want to move it out or you know, before we move to a vote on a consent agenda, we always open for discussion, we can just handle it at that time.
Either one, as long as we talk about it.
All right.
Educate me.
Yep, no problem talking about it. All right. With that, we'll then uh go to public comments. Uh, there is no response from our previous council meeting uh uh public comment. We'll go to the consent agenda on our, yes, sir.
Um, sorry, we get, we get comments on the, the internet or, you know, email. And some of them I think are appropriate to respond in this form. Yeah, I don't know. Staff is ready to respond to that. Okay, so there is some, a comment to respond to.
Yeah, but I, I, you know what? Actually, I don't think we need staff to respond via email that every single email that this city receives.
I totally agree.
I think if they're going to respond, then the comment should come in in the form of a submitted public comment. There is a, i- am I wrong? And I'm just looking at stuff. Is there, is, isn't there a way to submit written public comment? Cause to me, that's a different deal, right? There's emails you send and then there's submitted public comment.
Yeah, and this particular cases came into an email through our website to the entire city council. And in, on some issues, we may get a lot of those questions, right? This, this was a particular question. I think it's easy to handle. We, we did provide a response, you know, we emailed back and uh, but we can, you know, I can share that as part of my city.
Well, let me just ask, what is our process? If I wanted to submit uh written public comment, how would I do that?
For the city council meeting?
Yeah.
Um, I think under the current council rules, it's, it's, you have to come three minutes in front of the city council where you can, um, you know, not come in person anymore, but uh virtually do that.
All right. So Councilor Hokinson, I'm good. I'm good with it. But I, I would like to explore. Okay, I'll go to you, but real quick and then I'll go. Uh, I would like to explore maybe some better manners for us to be able to, you know, submit something that is for public comment, you know, for future meetings.
Yeah, Mayor, I just add that when there is a public hearing, like in the case, we have an open public hearing right now for the fees. Um, people can absolutely, and there are instructions for submitting written testimony for that.
Okay, and that's, that's all I was going to comment on was that I thought that, that we had a mechanism for people to submit testimony. And so then it would seem to me that if people want to make written comment, that, that would be an easy way to achieve that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think the distinction is, is the comment um and a, a public comment at a public meeting? Or is it an email that is going to the council for their information? Is the, and we've been treating those things as having a distinction between them.
Right. So I thought, I thought what we were specifically discussing was public comment. And so I, I think there's a format for people to make public comment. Emails are a little bit different, but yeah, so.
Maybe we should hold off and talk about this in a broader context.
Yeah, because uh, and I saw your hand up, Rich. I just, I want to respond, right? I'm totally good with that. I just want to make sure that we're not setting some kind of precedent where, you know, we're responding to every single email that comes in the city. It's a kind of public comment.
For sure.
Yeah, Rich, you had a comment.
Yeah, to Laurie's note, though, that's only for public hearings, correct? That's not for, what we're asking for is like if somebody was to show up here and say during their public comment time, not during a public hearing, it's two separate.
That's right.
Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, I think the distinction here is you have an email from a citizen about a particular question or request, right? And maybe what the council does is, you know, a counselor can bring that up as part of your council report, either have that addressed or asked, is this an issue that the council wants to take on as a, you know, uh, you need their policy or a project or something like that. Cause the vast majority of those staff are just going to answer, copy the council, provide the answer. And we'll have other ways for people to engage with the city too. We're, we're rolling out uh a new platform uh through Bang the Table Engagement HQ. That's going to have lots of questions that people are going to be able to submit and interact with the city on. And I think to the mayor's point, be careful of not setting this precedent where we're answering every single email that comes in to the council or staff through a public forum like the city council. And, you know, we're engaging with public in so many other ways as well. And so like, where's that line that crosses between answering that question at a city, city council meeting and repeating the answer for the city council meeting versus, you know, answering it through these other platforms and by email. Uh, I mean, that might just be where you guys are comfortable. This warrants a public response versus, oh, that was a, you know, a small question that we answered. You know, maybe the rest of the public doesn't need to, to hear that response through a city council meeting.
Yeah, I guess if we feel like we got an email as an individual counselor as a body, we have a couple of options in front of us, right? I mean, we can individually respond back to that individual. We have our counselor reports that we're able to give, you know, at the next meeting. Um, and if we feel like we want to have a broader kind of response as a council body, well, that's always a request we can make as a counselor to get that item onto the agenda or maybe bring it up during our council reports. Uh, I would just hate to see some sort of deal where we're, we're feeling like we have to do some sort of public response to every email inquiry that we.
It's impossible. It's impossible.
Especially lately, we seem to have quite a number of emails that come through our system. I'm sure you are getting the same ones I am. And some of those are just overwhelming. So if we could have some process behind the scenes when that happens. And then when you've got something like this where it's important enough by a counselor or it comes in, I guess, as the, talk about, talk about what Rich talked about was there's two processes. Public comment for the first five minutes of the, of the council meeting versus public comment that just comes through any kind of way that gets us good to us. So I guess I'm not thinking that we should answer.
I'm just so happy not to be looking for your little thumbs up icons. I gotta tell you.
You don't see any thumbs up for me.
All right, Rich had a comment.
Yep.
Oh, no.
Okay, good, everybody. Okay. Okay, uh, with that, uh, consent agenda items, city council meeting minutes, our professional audit services agreement and our Sandy Enterprise Zone renewal. I know there's some questions on that, but any other items on our consent agenda? All right, resolutions. We have our, our public hearing on the master fee schedule update. We have our uh resolution uh to adopt a supplemental budget. Don't forget that we will be having an urban renewal board meeting just previous to our council meeting as well, where we'll be going through those same items. Um, under old business, full run water supply options decision. And then pool exploratory task force bylaws clarification. Then under new business, Sandy Net Advisory Board Member Appointments. And then wastewater treatment plant improvement project schedule update. All right, we'll then be going into our report from our city manager, then our committee and council reports, and then we'll adjourn for the evening. With that, we are now in our work session and we have our transportation projects update and policy options.
I will do the introduction, Mayor. Thank you very much. Uh, it's good to see everybody back in the city council chambers. And normally with work sessions, we're on the floor, but given the technology and just getting us to this point, I think we're okay doing the work session like this. And you guys can, there have, you know, have your screens and the mics too. Um, so Mike Walker, um, will be doing a longer introduction, I believe, for uh Mr. Condor, who's with uh Capital Asset and uh Pavement Services. But the purpose of the work session tonight, uh, there's a, there's a few different topics and some of them are kind of wonky, so apologize, I'll apologize ahead of time. Uh, but some of them are more policy oriented too, um, with regards around our three sixty-second and Bell Street Extension Project. Um, and in regards to some uh policy choices with SDCs and reimbursement portion of the SDCs for transportation projects. The first uh presentation uh by Mr. Condor will be on our pavement management program and different options on funding that program. So we can maintain the optimal PCI, which is uh again, kind of a wonky thing, but it's our pavement condition index. And eighty is kind of that sweet spot, which I'm sure Joel will get into on keeping it, um, keeping the streets well maintained at the least, you know, cost to keeping those streets at that level. Sandy's in a pretty good position because of our, you know, gas, local gas tax and state funding uh to keep our streets at that uh sweet spot. But as you'll see, uh, we're starting after getting it up to over eighty, our projections are, we're going to start uh seeing that sort of decrease over the next few years without some additional funding. Um, and then the second topic, like I said, will be around our utility um uh line uh options for three sixty-second and Bell Street. And really, it's kind of a policy choice in front of council if we want to include water and wastewater lines in that project. We think there's other ways to go about that, and I think there's some good um discussion to be had about uh how we kind of achieve that economic development portion of that project to, to help development. Uh, recognizing that the investment of just building that road uh is significant on its own too. And then finally, as I said, there's um some direction that we're seeking with the SDCs uh for a couple of transportation projects, uh, Gunderson Road and three sixty-second. Where you have the option of, of adding a reimbursement portion to the transportation SDCs to recoup some or all of those costs of uh those major important projects. Uh, so Mike, do you want to do a little brief introduction for Mr. Condor and then we can jump into uh the presentation on our uh pavement uh condition?
Yeah, sure. Um, you know, Capital Asset has performed these, these um surveys for us every five years since two thousand and one, even before we had a local option fuel tax. And uh the first pavement condition survey they provided and recommended uh project list kind of helped us sell the um, uh, local fuel tax to the voters. Uh, showing that here's what we do in five years if we have this much money. And so we've uh kept with that every five years and uh, uh, they performed the analysis and the um condition survey. Provided with a five-year plan for recommended projects and a show, give us a little roadmap of where we will go, uh, or where we're headed with maintaining the uh PCI or the uh, you know, condition of the um street network. So I'll introduce Joel uh Condor with um Capital Asset, Capital Asset and Pavement Services.
Thank you, Mike. The council, Mayor, thank you very much for having me tonight. Um, hang with me. The, for some reason, I'm having some kind of issues tonight where the video keeps going away. Hopefully the audio's there.
It is. Joel, it is. We can hear you great. Sometimes you come in and out, but we can hear you just fine.
Yeah, I'm not sure what's going on. They've been having internet outages all over the area here today. So I'm down in Salem. So uh, Mike, are you putting the uh, the report up?
Yeah, I can, I can share that.
I, I can see I keep losing the video here. So um, Mike, that's the budget options report. It's the uh, my presentation that I sent to PowerPoint I sent about a week ago.
Oh. Okay.
So if uh, do you have that?
I, I think Jeff, do you have that?
Yeah, I said that, yeah. Jeff said he would uh, but if, I, I could try and share it on my screen if you turn, yeah, if you turn yours off.
We'll find that Joel and Mike in just a moment.
All right.
I told everyone there was going to be definitely technical difficulty.
Do this. This is so close to being really cool. You don't have it.
Do you have it? If not, I can try and share it on my end.
I do have it, Joel. Oh, no, I'm sorry.
I've got it up, Jeff.
Oh, okay. Thanks, Mike.
Always a shake down.
Oh, there we go. All right.
Is that up? Okay. Thanks, Mike.
Anyway, like Mike was saying, um, I am Joel Condor. I'm with Capital Asset Payment Services. We have been coming up there, like Mike said, for just about twenty years. I did the initial assessment back in two thousand and one and here I am two thousand and twenty. I believe we did this at the end of last year. Um, I went back at personally, myself, and uh re-inspected every single street in the city there. So um, you've got some pretty up-to-date information, consistent data. So Mike, you want to go to the next screen there and um.
Yeah, just scroll down, Mike.
Scroll there. Yeah, okay. So what is the pavement management system? I know a few of you on the council probably heard me before. I come back in about every five years, but uh, the pavement management system really is just a computerized uh program that inventories all the streets. Uh, we do the assessment of all the streets. We put them into the statement management system and kicks out the acronym, the PCI, the Pavement Condition Index, which is from zero to a hundred. So um, the program is very powerful. It can look, it can be a crystal ball. We can look into the future. We can make maintenance decisions, put them in there and see what happens if we do. If those don't look good, we can back it out, put in different maintenance decisions, different maintenance treatments, different years and so forth like that. And we can play with it until we find that sweet spot where the city of Sandy would get the most bang for their buck. And that's pretty much what we do every time we put together one of those budget options reports. Um, the uh software we're using is called Street Saver. And uh, obviously the most common one used on the West Coast, everybody around you, all the cities around you that use pavement management use it. Uh, Clackamas County uses it. We just got done doing all fourteen hundred plus miles of Clackamas County. So um, guys are using the proper software at this point. So on the next slide, uh, we'll talk a little bit about what the current um condition there is in, in Sandy. We said the PCI, that's a network level eighty. So that's your average network uh wide of all your streets. And you can see you have about fourteen miles of arterial and collectors main streets and about twenty-two miles of residential streets. So it's broken up pretty much how most cities are, are broken up. Um, you can see that almost seventy-eight percent of your network's in good shape and that's a great number. I, when I do these presentations, I don't usually get to see that number that high. Um, we have about uh sixty-five clients here in Oregon and the cities. Um, and I think there's only three that have a PCI of eighty or above. You're one of the three. So you guys are in great company. You're in great shape. If we had to rank uh all the cities in the state, you guys would definitely be top three. So uh, kudos to your uh street department for taking care of your streets and providing the proper maintenance. So you can see just eighteen percent or so isn't fair, you know, three percent is important. You really don't have anything uh to mention, but it's very poor condition. So um, overall, your street network's in really good shape. So good job to that. Uh, next slide, uh, we'll talk a little bit about your pavement condition history. And like uh Mike said, when I first came there in nineteen, in, in two thousand and one, did your first assessment, you guys had a network uh PCI of seventy-four. And you can see over the twenty, about twenty years, you've risen, you've uh took it up to an eighty and that's hard to do. Um, really is. Obviously that local gas taxes really helped you guys achieve that goal. But getting a PCI to move network-wide six points, um, that's, that's usually pretty expensive to do that. So you guys have done a great job of doing that. And, and like we said there a little bit earlier, you know, you're getting into that sweet spot where you want to be. And that's the least of, it costed the least amount of money to maintain your streets when you're up in the eighties. So um, on to the next slide there.
You want questions throughout this or at the end?
At the end, if you could, please.
Yeah, no problem.
Great, thank you. Uh, this is the, the slide I call the Pay Me Now or Pay Me Later slide. It really basically talks about applying preventive maintenance when you should and not letting streets cycle down until they fall apart and then having to rebuild them. Cause you really look at that thing, if you get them in that right before they hit that fair condition, it costs you about a little less than four dollars a square yard to do your crack seals and chip seals and slurry seals. And if you wait till they get down, they cycle down till they fail, you know, you're into the thirty dollars a square yard or more. We're seeing a lot of the new, the prices coming in this year on the bid tabs running in that fifty dollar a square yard. So um, that's the whole premise of this statement management system is to let Sandy know that, okay, here's your streets that are just starting to fall. And to catch those and apply preventive maintenance to those before they do deteriorate. And that, that way it saves the city a lot of money. On the next slide, uh, we start talking about some of the scenarios we ran, and I believe we ran four scenarios for Mike. Uh, the first one was unconstrained. I call this the blank check theory. This is what we would do if the city of Sandy had all the money in the world. Here's what we should do and you should spend three point four million over five years. You know, just about seven hundred thousand a year is what it's, it's saying to spend. And that gets you up into that PCI network. You can see eighty-four, eighty-two kind of keeps you in there. And that's really the optimum number to be shooting at is in that eighty-two to eighty-four range. And that's what would happen if you guys had all the money in the world. So that just kind of gives you an idea to let Mike know that you need to be in that seven hundred thousand range to get there. On the next slide, uh, we talk about the current investment level, which is two hundred and fifty thousand a year, a far cry from seven hundred thousand. But, you know, at this rate, we can see over the next five years, you're going to lose a little bit of ground on this. So it's, you're just not investing enough in the, in the system. You have in the past, you got it up there, but now um, your system obviously has grown. The mileage has obviously increased since uh I first did this years ago. So now you have a little bit bigger network and a lot of those streets that you got to when we first started uh using pavement management back in the early two thousand. And into that two thousand eight, two thousand ten era, those streets are all now becoming due again for maintenance. So um, that's what you're losing uh on your current investment level. So um, if we look to the third scenario, and this was, okay, what does it take to maintain our PCI? And you can see that's about five hundred thousand per year, which pretty much is double what you're investing now. And that would hold you and hold the streets in good condition and that would be, you know, optimum for you. And a lot of times this is attainable. Obviously, the blank check theory is not attainable. A lot of times increasing your, your budget up this much um is attainable. And so that's why we run this scenario out there for you. The fourth scenario we run, and that's the one, if you don't spend any money, and I know people say, why put this in there? Well, we have quite a few clients that have decided not to spend for a year. They save the money, they bankroll it. We're going to do a big project. We're going to hold off and we're going to pave everything in one year and slurry seal the next year. We're going to build this pot. And this kind of shows you the effect of what happens if you do that. So um, and we even, uh, one of the clients I just did a presentation for a couple of weeks ago, city of West Lynn. Uh, they decided not to do any maintenance at all. They were using it all for uh the sidewalk, ADA ramps and the beautification project. And that's where they put all their money and, and they went five years without putting any money into their streets and they took a real nosedive. It's going to take them probably twenty years to recoup uh that poor decision. So um, that's why we put this in here in case you, someone does come up with the idea of let's not spend any money for a few years. On the next slide, it's kind of a, just a map. Uh, the, the Street Saver, this pavement management system is a great tool, uses GIS. And it just kind of shows you your current condition right now. And if you see any yellow or orange roads or red, um, those are obviously very poor streets and those are the streets that need maintenance. So there's a snapshot of your city and you're seeing a lot of yellow and orange in there. So those are the streets where a lot of the money would be earmarked for um coming up. If we look at the next map, um, this is uh the unconstrained or the blank check uh scenario. You can see most everything goes away. There's a couple little orange or yellow ones in there you can see and an orange one or two. And typically what happens with the blank check theory is that if we don't catch them all in five years and you're six or seven, those streets will be caught. So um, that's really, it, it gives you a real snapshot of how great you can make your city there if you have all the money in the world. So the next one is the uh, your current budget. And you can see that, okay, there's some red ones popping up in the, that's um, those are failed streets right there. So um, and you see a lot of yellow and orange in there. Again, that's your current budget. And uh, so over the five years, that's what it's going to look five years from now, the way it currently is. So um, you can see you're not really knocking a lot of those down. If we look to the next slide where we want to increase our PCI a few points and just double the budget, this is what you'd get for it. The red one goes away. Most of the orange ones are gone away and most of the yellow ones have gone away. There's still a few out there, of course, but that just kind of gives you an idea if you made that decision to increase the street funding. This is the bang you'd get for your buck. You can see it geographically. I think the next slide is the zero funding and you can see things go pretty bad there on the zero funding. But I tend to see, I have a tendency not to look at this slide a lot. It's too depressing. So, and it's not real life, really. I don't think, not too many cities are going to go zero funding. The next slide, I believe, is just a snapshot of all four scenarios put together. So you can kind of look at it. And you kind of get an idea on um, on your deferred maintenance and how much it grows. You can get an idea on what, on how much your system is in good condition. You can see as you spend less money, obviously it goes down and so forth like that. And you can look at the percentages in good, percentage in fair. And you can look down at the bottom and you can see there, if you're not spending much money there, um, that those numbers really jump up there quite a bit there. So. But that's just kind of a snapshot of all the scenarios together right there. So um, and I think that that's probably the last slide on the presentation. Yes, now I'll field any questions that you, that you may have. And uh, and really what we've done is we've just done a snapshot of your network and we've reported to Mike and told him this is the condition uh of your network. And try to help him make informed decisions moving forward.
Oh, you had a question?
Yeah, a couple of them. Um, it went through quickly. Is there a, a slide that talks about the current condition? Maybe you can do that one if you would for me, but I'll, I'll just go ahead and describe it. You've said that we're in really pretty good shape and quite honestly, um, I guess I might want to disagree a little bit with that. I have been hanging, ringing Mike and Jordan a little bit about some of the problems that just don't seem to be uh resolved. And some of the roads in that current condition, maybe it's the one that, yeah, that one is um disappointingly not being taken care of. And so at eighty percent, you're saying that those are really good shape. Um, I'm aware of paved roads that have mud coming up through them. I'm aware of potholes on Pleasant Street. Although I think Pleasant Street showed an orange on it and it's probably about this place that are, uh, in my mind, has got the potholes that need to be dealt with and I've got a few plates with. And then one thing you did not discuss, and I don't know if it's something I'm going to have to go to somebody else to take care of that, is some of these intersections where ODOT and Sandy's responsibility comes together. There's a number of really rough uh intersection transitions from one to the other. And probably the most concerning for me is the one at, I call it the Post Office Hill intersection with twenty-six. It just seemed to be one of those, I can never really determine where the ODOT line is and where the city of Sandy's responsibility is. Um, maybe you could describe to me how that interaction works so that if there is a half and half or there's a, ODOT takes one time, one year, and we take another time. Or how would that get resolved?
Well, I can tell you regarding that, your first comment about um, some more streets and, and mud coming up through. I did notice quite a few, not quite a few, but I did notice streets when I was out there where the alligatoring uh was so severe that it was fractured. And there was uh, some of the sub base was coming up through it. But you know, when I talk about that eighty PCI, that's a network level PCI. So you have a lot more good streets than you do poor streets. You definitely have some poor streets. They definitely show up. But one of the things about pavement management, like I said earlier, it's geared toward keeping your good streets good. And as money and grants become available, then you attack those streets that are failed. And so that's really where you're at. So you have a lot of really good streets and a few pretty poor ones. And so um, yeah, there's no doubt that you have some poor streets in, in, in your city. So um, but again, like I said, the pavement management system is going to really focus on keeping those good streets good and, and let you attack those other ones um in another manner. Regarding the ODOT and the Sandy thing that, you know, in the city of Sandy jurisdiction, that might be something Mike wants to speak to you about. I've dealt with this in many, many jurisdictions where we have ODOT. I myself was a thirty-year employee at uh, at Marion County down here in Salem. And we have a whole lot of intersections that, that, that met ODOT highways. And over my thirty-year career there, I just beat my head against the wall sometimes. And over my thirty-year career there, I just beat my head against the wall sometimes when trying to find out whose jurisdiction, whose it is. And you'd talk to the ODOT and they'd say, well, this is much, this many feedback are ours, and then it becomes yours. And then you talk to somebody else and they give you another number. So I've had a lot of issues trying to reconcile what is actually right away of the ODOTs. And so so maybe Mike can talk to you more about that, but I've had some real issues with them, and it seems like they don't even know the answer.
Oh, I just want to point out, you know, some of the streets that council extra mentioned. You know, there are some external factors that really don't show up in the pavement management program. You know, we just tore up a bunch, Wolf Drive is in bad shape, it needs work. But we didn't want to pave it because we knew we're gonna be tearing it up and replacing all the sewer lines underneath it. So we, there is a little. You know, when we get these five-year plans, we we kind of look at them in conjunction with our other capital projects and say, are we gonna be putting a new sewer line in there, a new water line or whatever. So we kind of shift projects around, and that's one reason that Wolf shows up there is very poor because we knew we had the sewer project this year. And and the issue between ODOT and Sandy right away, it's always been a problem. You know, we don't, you know, people who drive over the streets, they don't care whose street it is, they just want it fixed. So, you know, we don't, we try not to hide behind that. And, you know, we repair ODOT issues, but they don't do the same for us. But I think that's something we can solve maybe with an intergovernmental agreement with ODOT, where if we touch a street, we'll take it all the way up to the you know, the fog line. And if ODOT touches the street, they'll take it all the way back to the end of the curb return. I think we can try and work to some work some agreement out with ODOT. And as Joel pointed out, it is a network thing. The PCI isn't designed to look at, you know, particular issue, you know, the ten-square-yard area on one lane of the street. And then when we do these, these paving contracts every year, we usually put in a bid item for spot repairs. We get a per square foot price for that, or we do actually, you know, go dig out these bad spots, restore them and fill them in. So, you know, a lot of these can be handled as part of our regular paving contract, or we just, you know, with the city staff maintenance works. Is there a place in there where it comes to a point, you just you just don't want to play around with it anymore, and you're just gonna fix it? Or do we just keep on interacting, trying to interact with ODOT? And then continually deferring those rough edges where that's the intersection between ODOT and Sandy? Because, you know, you're right on that grandma, when she drives over that bump, year in and year out, she doesn't care if it's ODOTs or Sandy's or you know, or somebody else's. She's just struggling when she bounces over those hills, those bumps and stuff. So. Is there a point at which we just say, that's it, we're gonna just do it ourselves, or do we have some? You're saying we're gonna start interacting with ODOT. Is that a process that won't get done soon, or what are we talking about here?
Well, yeah, I can't promise how fast ODOT moves on anything, but I would say, you know, if we if we have a project on the street, we'll probably go up and do that, you know, even though it's on ODOT's side of the jurisdiction line. You know, so we just kind of wait till the project moves around, and we look at those things. One thing that will help too, I think, is the conversion of all the signals to, you know, photo radar control for the vehicle detection, you know, the loops that you see in the streets. It's very expensive to replace those when you overlay a street or if you grind up a street. So that's some of the issue on some of these streets, you know, where it's at a signalized intersection. We don't want to touch the loop because it might double the price of a simple overlay project. So now that the loops are going away and they're using the little pole-mounted detectors, that will make a lot of these issues surrounding the kind of the junction and right at the intersection a lot easier to deal with.
My understanding is Kathleen, you have a question?
No, I just was kind of, well, I did have a question if what whether this summer's project list is included in the current conditions as being done or not, because I thought there were some project work planned on Pleasant that was showing up. But then my other comment would just be that I'm, you know, probably we can't be talking about specific roads and everything else. Probably have bigger things to get through here for the workshop and getting into the guts of the data and stuff is probably not helpful at this point.
So what do you guys need from us? I mean, because I, you know, the staff report kind of indicated, hey, guys, so we're gonna be going underneath this eighty, you know, PCI criteria unless we get some sort of additional revenue stream into the fund. Obviously, there's some probably some different avenues in which we can do that. There's a lot of steps to get to that kind of a decision-making process. What are you looking for from us?
Yep. So like the staff report said, this was mostly for informational. We got this report. You know, like Mr. Conder said, it's a lot of good news, right? System-wide, we're at eighty. We benefit from new development and a lot of that too, right? A lot of our roads are newer, and we do have the gas tax. And, you know, despite all that, on current, our current funding will show that our streets will start to decrease. So this is really the introduction to what is our pavement condition, what is the pavement management program? We we put some options in there of like, as the state gas tax increases, we'll have more funding available. But this is really, you know, something that council probably have to make a decision in the future. If we want to maintain eighty, here's some things that we can toggle. It's like saving less for capital projects is one way. If you want to just achieve an eighty, you know, PCI system-wide without raising new revenue, you have to look within the street fund, within your other funds, and see how do you come up with that two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year to maintain that? Can shift monies around within the street fund, so less money towards future capital projects, right? Keeping intact our major, you know, three sixty-second and other priorities. But maybe you can shuffle more funding from, you know, the additional gas taxes and the VRF towards this program. So we'll probably come back with some recommendations on how we do that, and then future budget years. And as we look at our TSP and prioritizing projects into our capital improvement program, we try to find a way to get as close as we can to that five hundred thousand. Mike also mentioned a couple other things in there with regards to like ODOT funding after the Ten Eyck project's done. Some of the funds that get dedicated to the city of Sandy that we can shuffle around. So there are some options. We want to start getting this on your radar. This was a good night to do that because we had the work session and a couple other transportation-related things to bring forward.
So getting any indication that we can use federal, and I mean, I know we're a ways away from seeing what that infrastructure program looks like. But do those generally need to go towards new projects and new capacity or?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the distinction here, so we use our gas, local gas taxes for our pavement management program, which is those overlays, the slurry seals, chip sealing, things like that versus building new, you know, constructing a new road or doing the massive, you know, rehabilitation projects or expansion projects.
Can we move stuff like out of general fund contingency and stuff into us? I know that street dollars are very constrained to streets, but our other dollars, we can technically supplement a street fund.
Yeah, general fund for sure can be used for whatever.
Any other questions before we move on?
Yep, I heard a comment that said that because of our construction, we're looking pretty good. So I'm assuming that construction means new streets, new roads, that so forth. And those are largely being covered by the development fees. What happens long term when five, ten years, we now have to come back and story? What's the, what's the plan to make sure that our revenue source is growing in order to cover those things that we're adding on to the system, to the network?
Yeah, that's a very good point. I think Joel kind of alluded to that is, you know, you have a lot of new streets that brings your PCI up. But eventually they deteriorate, and he showed in some of those scenarios that a lot of these streets that were built ten, fifteen years ago need some sort of treatment. It's a minor treatment, it's an inexpensive treatment, but eventually that gap will get bigger. And I think, you know, like Jordan pointed out, we're just trying to show there's a, there's a gap, we think we can close it with some of these funds. We may not close it year by year, but over the next five years or next three by any means, could be able to close that, but the implications are those funds wouldn't be available for capital projects. And we're just considering funds that we can use for street maintenance here that don't have strings attached. And that's kind of what that table on the second page of the staff report is about. So, you know, we'll look at that. You know, one thing too, we're kind of conservative in how we budget for this. You know, the revenue is closer to three hundred thousand dollars a year for the gas tax, or at least it was pre-pandemic. And so we budget five hundred thousand in there just in case, you know, we have a, you know, fuel efficiency goes up or we have a, you know, a drop in travel demand. So, you know, we do have some flexibility and we can kind of close that gap. But we're just letting you know that this gap may grow, but we're trying to do everything we can to keep it narrow, keep it narrow or close it if we can with funding.
All right. Okay, three sixty-second bell.
Yeah, Mike, do we have, do you want to put up the alignment graphic if you can, if you have that available? That might be helpful to kind of visualize what we're talking about here.
Yeah, I'll sorry. Show this on a one. Here it is.
As Mike does that, introduce this second topic again. And really what we're talking about here is as we're, you know, doing the plans and working on moving towards getting this project bid out and started construction this fall and the summer, fall. One of the the ideas that, you know, we've kind of floated and thought about is, is this the time to do water and wastewater lines in the roadway at the same time? That wasn't a part of the initial scope of the project. It's, you know, not essential for the project. What we're trying to avoid is digging up a new road, as we just talked about PCI and everything like that. But looking at where the properties are, what existing utilities are, there's, there's options other than just having the utility lines within that roadway. And in fact, the preliminary estimate for how much it would cost actually install water and wastewater lines in, you know, underneath the roadway is actually pretty expensive. We have some, you know, kind of ideas for how you would pay for that if the if the council wanted to go that route. But we think because there's some existing sewer and water in the vicinity, there's other ways to go about getting those future, you know, properties when they develop service without having to have having these lines within the three sixty-second or Bell streets. Mike, you want to go ahead and jump into more detail on on the schedule and sort of some of those ideas?
So just to be clear, you believe that there is a way in which we can hold off on the utility extensions without having to re-dig up the road?
I do, Mike.
I mean.
Developer may want something different as they go in there and see how they develop the property, right? We don't know how that's gonna develop in the future, right? And so you're kind of future-proofing it. But, you know, looking at the topography and, and, you know, what the skippers and lending's property have and what they have access to versus the the properties near Royal and Bell. You know, I think there's, there's another way of going about it other than, you know, a two million dollar extra for this project. Mike, if you want to dispute that, go for it.
Well, yeah, I mean, the only way to be certain is to put the pipe in now. But even then, you know, like Jordan pointed out, you know, you never know what what goes on aside or no, they have to. You know, they, the way the site is partitioned or divided, you know, you can't tell, but I think there's, we could, I think we said minimal disturbance. So I think we could still do it, you know, this graphic kind of shows there's an existing water line that ends at the west end of Bell Street near the high school right now. And there's an existing north-south water line that goes up Royal Lane over to the Sandy Bluff Development. And that would serve, you know, a lot of the properties in there. There might be a little bit of water line we'd have to build just because it appears that there's a well in the right of, the future right-of-way. And we either have to, you know, find some alternate way of providing water to the shared well, I think there's two or three properties on it to those people are provided with a new well. But as far as the schedule, you know, it looks like we the big issues are we have to go through the city, city has to go through its own land use process on this. We have to annex one of these properties where the right-of-way is gonna be. So we don't have to go through the county's process on this. And so the application is prepared, we're trying to get that on a future council agenda. It's an island annexation, and those, as I understand it, can go straight to the city council. It doesn't have to go through the planning commission and then to the city council. So to accelerate that, we would recommend that we go straight to the city council with the annexation. And it's this property right here, I think it's ten or fifteen acres. It's outside the city, it's an island, and it would be pretty simple to annex it in a rapid manner. And and we have willing property owners, yeah, they're fine with, they actually, they've applied for annexation, they just never submitted in that an application. So they seem to be willing to have the city do this on their behalf. And then the other issue is the right-of-way acquisition. We've got six parcels. From all appearances so far, we have willing sellers. We've, there's a big delay in getting appraisers to do right-of-way appraisal work. ODOT's kind of using up all the capacity on these ADA projects, you know. Even if you only need to buy forty square feet of land to fit one of these ADA ramps, and they have to go through the same appraisal, review and offer process as you would if you're buying like an acre and a half from somebody for a road right-of-way. So ODOT's sucking up all the appraisal capacity right now, but we we believe if we split this up and deal with the four parcels that are east of Royal Lane, these three on the top and this one on the bottom. We can start on those probably in the next week or two, get the appraisals going and get the offers going to the property owners. These may take a little longer. These also have some, we're still waiting for wetland delineation to come back on this property from the state. But we think if we split this up, we can get these kind of underway. And we have to go through the land use process, you know, this is a flood slope hazard. In fact, since we're crossing a couple of streams or removing some mature trees, so we have to go through a flood slope hazard review of planning. And we're trying to get that on the August planning commission agenda. And unless it's appealed, it would, you know, be in there. And that we give a decision of that. And so the idea would be, once we got it on the agenda, once the right-of-way looked good, we could pick a date sometime, maybe in August to bid this out and try and get some of the major earthwork done in September and October before the fall rains start. And then you kind of put the project to bed over the winter and then resume it in the spring and finish it up. So that's kind of the plan right now. There's a few variables in there with the right-of-way and with the land use process. But if it goes the way we'd like it to go, we think this is achievable.
The other thing with the right-of-way too is it, Mike, you know, there'll be enough right-of-way with this roadway that even if utilities needed to be added with development, I think there might be, you know, it's a fresh road. You might be able to fit that pipeline without disturbing, you know, the travel lanes of the new pavement too. That was the other idea there.
So just to jump into this, for me, is I feel like one of our responsibilities is to hold on to the interest of the city and maximize our leverage. And so I don't want to have to tear up a new road to put these utilities in. But I can, I tend to believe that the city engaging in a conversation about extending utilities to this process can be one of leverage and, you know, the ability to actually act as an incentive later on to try to get the kind of project on these properties that we want. So, for example, let's say that we pay now to to include the utilities. Well, now we have no control over what goes on through those properties. I mean, we do because we're part of the land use process, but they meet, you know, the criteria for that land, we can't get in the way of that. When we are part of the discussion, if it's now an incentive, right, we're offering utilities as an incentive to try to get the right project. Yeah, that's at least part of where my head is on some of this. Curious what you guys think.
Well, I'm thinking a lot about the over expenses for this thing. And I guess that was a question, I guess I was glad that Jordan brought it up is that because this is a fresh, right away with the road, those channels, the ditches alongside the road are certainly an option to put future utilities in and should be able to put that in it. And at this point, we are spending quite a bit of our monies. So I guess I'm thinking the same thing. Your idea of leverage is an interesting one. I'm thinking about how much money we have, and I think because it is possible, I think I'm heading for the idea of just waiting until we get a chance to see where our developments start. And once we start getting roads in, I'm sure people are gonna get ideas that this is gonna be something they want to get involved in. We're gonna see some commercial ground starting to pop up. Some more residential.
Yeah, for, you know, it's an interesting thought because I do not want to rip up another road. I mean, that's, you know, every citizen, Sandy should be questioning that one if we just paved the road and then two years later we rip it up. It's a hard one to defend. So what I hear you saying, Jordan, is in the right-of-way, that would be paved, we'd be able to get the sidewalks, the road and things on it to where we'd be able to put in the utilities after the fact without touching the pavement at all?
There's no guarantee, you know, I said travel lane, just in case, you know, a case that you know, they would have to trench or something like that. But I I think, you know, like I said, if you put it in now, you're future-proofing it. But you also might be putting in pipe that isn't quite necessary because that, those properties But you also might be putting a pipe that isn't quite necessary because that those properties might develop in a completely different way than where the pipes are, they're going to have to cross all the way over to connect with them where they're at. So, you know, either way, it's a sort of a gamble. But I think, you know, engineers probably say, there's probably a way, if you're working with the developers, especially as an incentive to get utilities to them, you can, you know, have utility easements on the property or something like that too, to avoid getting into the pavement.
So I was thinking of the Trump line, basically how I seen this in the past, you have the Trump line that goes down where you tie into it as a, you know, to the developer. But when you look at some economic development aspects of like Camby, for instance, you know, they, they put out the area is the Chevy shovel ready projects that came, sent us from the state to a zone or whatever, we'll go ahead and do that. You know, the land without the utilities is still tough. I mean, the road is, you know, probably the biggest thing, but after that, you know, it's the utilities. And, you know, you look at going here, you go Estacada, you go to somewhere else, you know, and utilities will be that. We do know that the cost of these things would just go up because we have inflation, inflation goes up, right? And so so I guess that'd be what I would be worried about, not, not saying, well, imagining we have lines that went out into the property randomly, it'd be the trunk lines that you tie back into, like in most areas where we've got. I also thought this would also be solving some of the other issues off of, forget the name of the street that goes down by the dog park there, because we have, we have the sewer lines that go down there that can tie, you know, would loop around and tie in eventually to have a better system, but oh no, so you're showing on that map that you have from north to south or south to north, you have 12 inch water line is going from Highway 26 all the way to Bluff, already an easement that's already existing.
That's my understanding, 12 inch water line. Royal and then up. Right.
There's also a 12 inch sewer line, it doesn't show on this view, it doesn't go front of north on the Skipper and Lundin properties. So they're pretty easy to serve with sewer. There's also a water line the west end of the highway, west end of the city, a sewer line at the west end of the city that can be extended east serve the front of the Skipper and Lundin properties for those developed. There's a water line at the east end of the Lundin property where the vet clinic is, there's a 12 inch pipe there that could be extended west. So there's a lot of options for the Skipper and Lundin properties. And, and the park properties east of Royal Lane, that's kind of the, that's the tougher one to crack because they don't have access to the same pipes without going to intervening properties. So, you know, city can't solve that issue, we can't, you know, compel property owners to grant easements to other property owners. So, you know, they would have to work that out, but there's a lot of ways to, as Jordan pointed out, to, to set this up to minimize impact for the road in the future. And there will be room, there will only be a sidewalk on the south side of Bell and on the east side of 362nd, so there'll be still room on the north side of Bell, on the west side of 367 if we do need to be, but I've seen there. And we're also, I should point out that we're just talking about the wet utilities, just water and sewer. There, there is in the current estimate, a joint trench that would be used, you know, we just go to the telecoms, you know, standing at PGE gas company, so we're going to put a trench in, you put your facilities in there, you know, you'd be responsible with that cost. We're just supplying the ditch. And there will also be streetlights on both streets. So, you know, they'd be a joint utility trench for our telecom street lighting and standing that as well.
Okay, and then my understanding is that counselor Walker has a question?
I I'm really interested in getting to the next section where we talk about these reimbursement district or the the transportation reimbursement SDC. Because, you know, where I come from, I really believe that, you know, development should be paying, you know, most of the way for the, for what they're developing. And I, I, you know, you've heard me kind of question the whole idea of spending $8 million on this parcel that we don't, you know, kind of do that on other parcels that are being considered for development. I kind of understand where you're going with it, but I'm also very anxious to, you know, what, what the tonight's presentation has shown me is that we're using our gas tax and our motor vehicle fee money that would normally be going to maintain all our roads, our existing roads. And we're going to bite into the money we have for maintaining our existing roads to pay for the capital investment to build this $8 million road plus the Gunderson stuff. And so I'm really of the opinion that we need to be focusing on getting, you know, getting recompensated for the investment that we make on these from the developers when they develop, whether it be for the roads, for the utilities or any of that, I want us to be able to kind of, you know, have them pay, you know, their fair share of this, of this development. I can understand having some incentives, but I, you know, paying the whole $8 million fee and then having to, you know, scrap for maintaining our existing and expanding existing road system really doesn't sit right with a lot of the residents, I think. So I really want to make sure that we're making sure that developers who are going to benefit from this development pay their way. I think, you know, it's, everything's developing so fast, there's so much pressure to grow, there's so many, so much incentive and there's so much opportunities to develop here in Sandy that I just want to make sure that we aren't being too generous at the expense of our, you know, feeding all the other kids we have. So that's, you know, so when it comes to the utilities being in there, I think if the develop, you know, we don't even know what's going to go in there, where it's going to be, how it's going to be. So to go in there and kind of put stuff in when we don't even know that is a bit premature. And I think that's something that they could do when, when they come up with their plans of how it's going to be developed in conjunction with whatever vision, I guess, y'all are seeing there. But that's my two.
Thank you, Lori.
Yeah, I just want to, I like this idea a lot. I don't want to be short sighted in thinking that, you know, the only people that are going to benefit from this road are the developers. So one of our big issues with traffic through town is that everybody that lives on the north side of town has no way of getting around other than going up Highway 26. So by expanding Bell Street 362nd, we give those people an outlet. You know, on the Highway 26 west of town, off of Highway 26, also west of town. And the same thing with reducing the amount of traffic that's currently on Kelso, which is not a road that's designed to host the traffic that's currently on it. So I just want to make sure that we're not short sighted in recognizing that the city as a whole is going to greatly benefit from this project, greatly, greatly benefit from this project.
So I'd add on top of that additional tax revenue that comes in as result of development of those properties, including system development funds that go towards our wastewater treatment and everything else. Additional comment?
Yeah, Don. So in the staff report, it talks about the AFRD, the advanced, advanced finance public improvement reimbursed reimbursement district. Somehow left out a letter in the AFRD, but still, there's a paragraph in there that says, collection of AFRD reimbursements for city funded projects can trigger a reduction in STCs collected if the improvement is included in the capital improvement plan. And then here's the question related to the second, this last sentence. It says, it would not be fair to collect some of the cost of an improvement through the SDC and then try to recoup many of the same costs through an AFRD. Can you comment on the fairness part of that? Why is it not fair? And why does that matter?
Because I think you're double dipping on that, right, Mike? I mean, if you're charging STCs for recouping the costs of that project and then you're also doing an advanced district, then they're paying twice for that same project.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's true. And since we don't know what will go on a particular parcel of land, it's hard to predict what the systems development charges, what systems development charges will be generated by particular parcel land until you know what to use. So, you know, it'd be a, a big traffic generating use that takes up a small amount of, you know, on an acre or two. Or it could be something that takes up 10 acres and doesn't generate a lot of traffic. So it's really hard to predict that at this point. So that's why the AFRD is probably the, not the ideal solution for trying to recoup these costs.
All right, well, now I understand there's evolving feelings and thoughts about this overall project. You know, here tonight, what we're trying to figure out is what we're going to do with these utilities, right? And so what I'm kind of hearing is, is for a variety of different reasons, which is fine. It feels like there is kind of an overall consensus to hold off now on the utilities. But perhaps revisit it later on, depending on what the circumstances are that may arise at discussion. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. Why don't we go ahead and move forward on to the, I'm sorry, was.
Kathleen was shaking her head, yes.
Thank you for that, Don, appreciate it. Yeah, we're, we're figuring this out. All right, let's move on to the third topic. On reimbursement.
Yeah, as Jordan pointed out, this is kind of wonky and I'm sorry if the staff report's a little dense. But I'm channeling our sister FCS group consultant here a little bit of this. But you know, it kind of described both ways we can recover these costs. One is kind of a parcel by parcel thing. And you, you have the advantage of getting it back faster. If, but it, you know, could also serve as an impediment to development if it's got these high reimbursement obligations on it. So the other way where you just build it into the SDC is kind of like a buy in charge, you know, the city built this thing. Now you're using it, here's your buy in charge. That can be spread citywide, so the impact is smaller because these are city, you know, as Council Small would point out, these are citywide improvements and they provide a citywide benefit. So it's reasonable to fold them into the SDC. Only disadvantage of that is it just takes longer to get the to realize the funds as they come back and you, you know, you're, you're spending $2,021 and you might be getting back $20, $37, but you know, that's the way it is with any type of investment, you kind of look at the, you know, future value of the money.
So I'm assuming we all want to move forward with this.
Yes.
Is there anyone who does not want to move forward with this?
Were there two options in here?
It's, it's.
SDC or the AF, whatever it's called, RD.
You've got two different methods, right?
Oh, I apologize. Yeah. Sorry, Mike, you missed the, the recommendation there was to include, instead of the AFRD, but do the reimbursement.
Right.
Fee portion of the SDC for both the, the Gunderson Road intersection, which we had a study session on, I think it was several months or probably, you know, six months ago, it was before the new council was seated. And then for the 362nd project as well, for the reasons that Mike kind of just outlined.
So the difference is, if we go with the AFRD, the, the people that are going to pay for that are the developers and those who developed this area that we're talking about, right? With the SDC, everybody pays for it.
I think what was important that I learned from our, that last session, and that's, this is kind of what generated some of this was that if we're paying for the Bell Street Road, that's not going to be on a capital investment project list that you use to get STCs to. So you can't use STCs to get reimbursed you know, through our normal SDC process for the road. So now, so, but there is a process by doing this reimbursement SDC where you can do that, but it requires us changing our process a bit. So that's why, you know, and same with Gunderson, we, we've paid for Gunderson. I guess it's on an SDC list, Mike, I don't know. And, you know, but, but getting money, getting SDC money to it, I, you know, I don't know about Gunderson, but I know that we can't get SDC money to pay for Bell Street because we're paying for it and it's not on the SDC capital investment list. So Mike can probably, that's, that's my understanding of what it, but I want you to kind of make sure we all are on the same page with how it works.
No, both Bell and 362nd are in our capital plan, they have been since, you know, our TSP was, you know, adopted. We have been collecting STCs for those. Gunderson is not on the anything for reimbursement are in the capital plan. So we're not collecting STCs for that. So we'd recommend adding Gunderson and any improvements, any projects that the city builds in the future, we would fold those into this reimbursement component of the development charge. We, we don't do that now because many of our assets have, were built by developers and we provided credits to those developers to put them in. So they're contributed assets, so we can't include them in the reimbursement charge. Now that the city has, is at the point where we can build these capital projects in the transportation fund, we can start, you know, we're building projects that we can include in the kind of the buy in charge in the future. And, you know, we, we recommend that we start including, now that these building projects, we recommend that they be included in the reimbursement component of the SDC. I, I think we have some estimated dollar amounts here, these are very back of the envelope calculations on what the impact would be citywide for if we added Gunderson and added the reimbursement component for the 362nd Bell Street project. There's, it'd be about $21 per trip or about $300 per single family dwelling. Or Gunderson would be about $142 per single family dwelling and $10 per trip.
So, yeah. We want to do it.
So staff's recommending we just spread it around.
Yeah.
The SDC.
Yep.
I, I'm confused a little bit about the SDC. Like, I, I keep hearing that it's an investment, right? And so an investment has a return that, that you see someday, right? So how long until we would get our return on our money?
How long until we recoup?
Yeah. If you, if you spread it across the entire development, how long is the estimated time until we get our money back?
I mean, decades, you know, it kind of depends on how fast.
Right, it depends on development, the economy, pandemics.
Fully get that, right? So to wait decades when we can get reimbursed for that chunk of land, I think is maybe not a good investment by the time, because it's taken us that long to get back our money. Start adding, tacking on things like inflation and stuff like that. Your, your capital investment starts to drop unless you start seeing a return on that.
But, but every now and then you get a housing development with a bunch of residents that come in to say, we really need a second access route into it. We need you guys to pay for it. And then you try to figure out a way to recover your cost.
We've got a land use application that just came in for.
Yeah, I mean, because that's what we're trying to do here, right? It's, it's, we had to put in Gunderson Road, I mean, that's just one example. And now, you know, we're trying to recover those costs, you know, that, that we had to put forward out of our street fund.
So, but isn't the AFRD, am I missing that? Isn't the AFRD the way to do that? For that specific project?
It has the downside, the staff report noted, that you may never recover it if it's never developed. Whereas if you put it in the SDC, it's.
Whatever.
Whatever is developed will eventually break money. And if you put it in the other one, if, if there's 20 years before they build out that area, it's 20 years before you see a diamond, it could expire and you might not see anything.
Right, there's expiration. One of the things I think of, this is how I kind of look at it too, there's the recouping your money in a different way, right? One, being a safe, safer bet is with SDC, in my opinion, because of what you just stated, Don, and what we've heard. But two, in that, in the, in the, we see our investment coming back even quicker in other things that aren't around dollars. And so when we look at the failing intersection of Bluff and Highway 26, we're only to go north to a high school, your middle school housing or, you know, farther down the road, there's only one path north. And so the livability and I, how to quantify livability is really hard, but it's something that is maybe not as tangible, but a feeling, I guess, in the residents, whether you're traveling up and down 26 and you can get off to get to the high school to do, you know, bring students into school or maybe we talked about other things. You will recoup some of that in the livability of, of life in Sandy for everyone by going and getting this done. And the SDCs may take a little longer because, or to get, or will actually come in, whereas the other one may not come in, as you were mentioning, may expire or may have other ramifications for it. Because there might not be any of the development happen.
But this is, I mean, the livability part, it's a good point, but I mean, I think, I don't think we're talking about build or don't build, right? It's just how to pay for it and how to collect the fees. So it's really just a financial thing. And it's, there will be winners and losers in this, right? If you're a developer on one end of town, not associated with this, and we put in SDCs, you lose. And the guys who build over in this new area, they've become a winner. We did the other way around, the, you know. It, it, but also depending on the size of that, it could create a little bit, was it built too, that makes it less attractive?
That's right, you can. And, and just if I can, you know, another thing too is that, you know, this particular project will allow for, you know, increased commercial, not only residential. this particular project will allow for, you know, increased, uh, commercial, not only residential, but so there's, there's other things that will benefit the city, SDC fees and, and tax revenue and, you know, increased maybe tourism or, you know, whatever it may be. So there are, there are other methods of recouping those fees.
Well, I agree. I think, I think we're at a point that the project is going forward, right? We, and so I'm, I'm past all that stuff. I'm, I'm, I've accepted that's kind of.
But, but what, what I do, what I do struggle with is, um, you know, I do struggle with the, the fact that if we're going to talk about development, right? That I agree that development should pay for itself, but I also agree that the developer, that building down on this loop shouldn't have to pay for. I see both sides of the coin and I, and I can, I can get either way and it's one of those things that I don't. It's not the mountain I'm going to die on fight in here. But I, I also do struggle with, um, decades long on our, on our return for our capital, right? And I do struggle, but I also see the point in, um, I'm turning up the red. I, I don't think there's a good outcome here, uh, cause it kind of feels like the carpet's put before the roof. It feels, but, um, that's where we're at.
You know, in terms of what I just responded to, I think that you've got somebody over on this to loop who may not be able to provide much or seemingly provide, it looks like they're going to get much benefit out of something that happens on South Street. I, I guess I might argue with that. In terms of the entire city, they're going to end up seeing easier transport. You know, they're going to have to go to aggression, but there is a big accident down there on, you know, Orient Turnoff or something in that sort. So there're going to be a lot of things that will be beneficial throughout the city. Another piece that, um, I haven't talked about yet, but I just become aware that SDCs for Sandy, uh, are one of the cheapest in town. We probably should be relooking at our SDC fees. Yeah, I'm aware of 10, 15, $20,000 that are being pocketed by our developers. And, um, when I look at a house that sells, um, it's not so much that it's dependent on the SDC, it's just dependent on the pressure of how many houses that are on the market at the moment. And how many tens of thousands of dollars that are being overbid because that house is the only one on the market and people are just desperate to find a house. And those SDCs, $10,000, $20,000 are going into the pockets of the developer that really should be going into the betterment of our city. And I think as we go along, we're going to need to relook at that. I think that should be done relatively soon.
Yeah.
Other than to wait. And that's going to mean a quicker reimbursement for some of these projects like the 362nd and so on, so.
We just be unaware. Look at that sooner than later. I mean, we are in the mood, let's take advantage of it.
Yep, and just so I don't forget while you're on that, the other one is the park fee and lieu. Because when developers are constantly wanting to pay the park fee and lieu, that means it's too cheap. So that's another thing that I like.
So on this topic, I totally get it.
Yep. Yeah, 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 yeah. Get back, yep.
What I'm hearing on this topic, though, I'm feeling broad consensus.
Yep.
To move forward with the reimbursement component of the transportation SDC for 362nd Bell, as well as Gunderson, Highway 211. Great, very cool. All right. All right, I'm going to close. And then by the way, so when Kathleen Jeff, can she do the, the iconic thumb thing so I can see it on the screen? Would that happen if she did that, like?
That one works.
No, but, but, but can you do the other thumb thing? No, the electronic one? Cause then would it just stay there? So when I glance, I just don't want to miss you, Kathleen.
One, one thing we thought about, Mayor.
I just didn't know, you know what I'm talking about.
I do, yeah. The, so one thing we thought about, Mayor, is whether you might want to be logged into the meeting so that you can see the list like you're used to seeing before. The concern with that is audio feedback. We need to make absolutely sure that your speakers are.
All right, we'll figure it out between the meetings, but all right, that's good enough. All right, with that, I'm going to close our work session. And I'm going to, I'm going to convene our Sandy City Council Urban Renewal Board. Who is, uh, on Zoom from our Sandy Urban Renewal Board?
They're both with, with us, Mayor. I think their video is firing up right now.
Awesome. This agenda. And Jeff, we call it the roll.
I'll try to do it the right way this time. Board Member Pete Zell.
Here.
Board Member Smallwood.
Here.
Board Member Sheldon.
Here.
Uh, Board Member Walker has stepped away for the moment, it appears.
She's logged in, now she's here.
Yep, uh, Board Member Exner.
Here.
Board Member Hokinson.
Here.
Uh, Board Member Snyder.
Here.
And Board Member Jones.
Here.
And Board Chair Pulliam.
Here, welcome. All right, first item on our agenda is the approval of our meeting minutes from our June 7th meeting. Is there a motion? Uh, thank you, Kathleen. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes?
I make a motion to adopt minutes.
There's a second.
Second.
There's a motion by, uh, Board Member Sheldon, a second by Board Member Exner to adopt our approval minutes for our June 7th meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. We're giving a thumbs up. Uh, mayor, a thumbs down. Motion carries under new business. We have our supplemental budget for 2019, 2021, um, urban renewal budget. Um, Tyler.
Good evening, uh, board members. Nice to see you in person for the first time, some of you ever, and many of you in a very, very long time. As you are probably intimately familiar with now, we adopt a budget every two years. We just came off of the heels of our normal budget process. Share my screen here. And part of the post-budget creation process is a, into the biennium review of where we're at financially and where we need to make any adjustments at. And so for the Urban Renewal Agency, uh, there's one minor adjustment that is needed before the end of this biennium, uh, which is set to expire in about nine days. And that's a small $25,000 transfer from contingency uh, to personnel services, mainly to account for the increase, uh, increase in personnel costs related to the, uh, pay equity and compensation study analysis that we did last summer. So, got a question earlier from a board member about who's salary is paid out of urban renewal. And before anyone else asks that, I'll just jump in.
Can we do a quiz show?
Yeah.
Dave Snyder.
Are you ready?
Yes.
So, uh, it's, it's, there's no full-time.
I owe a little bit for finance.
Yeah, sorry. I mean, we can actually do that if we want. There are no full-time members that are, uh, you know, 100% allocated to a renewal, but it's portions of various staff. Uh, 10% of the city manager, 20% of the development services, 55% of the economic development manager, uh, 10% of a associate planner, and then a little couple other small percentages here and there for decision-making support in executing the plan. Pretty much all of those positions had some form of increase in their personnel costs during the pay equity and compensation study analysis. And obviously we didn't have those numbers when we built the budget the first time. So minor adjustment appropriation transfer from contingency to personnel is being requested so that we do not overexpend in any one category and, uh, violate budget law.
Any questions or a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2021-19, resolution adopting the supplemental budget to Sandy Urban Renewal Agency.
There's a second. Motion by Board Member Exner, a second by Member Hokinson to adopt the supplemental budget for 2019, 21. All those in favor signify by saying aye or provide me a thumbs up. Aye. Opposed, a nay or a thumbs down? Motion carries. Well, congratulations and thank you to, uh, Chris and Chief Snyder for, uh, joining us this evening. I'm going to go ahead and adjourn our Urban Renewal Board meeting. Good night, guys. And with that, I will call our Sandy City Council meeting to order. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jeff, you got the flag up and everything, man? There you go. With that, definitely, please call the roll.
Yes, Councilor Pete Zell.
Here.
Councilor Smallwood.
Here.
Councilor Sheldon.
Here.
Councilor Walker.
Here.
Councilor Exner.
Here.
Councilor Hokinson.
Here.
Mayor Pulliam.
Here.
Carly, you got something going on?
Yeah, for some reason I can't pick up the, uh, the agenda package is all blank for me, so if I can get Greg up here, tell me what I'm doing wrong.
Uh, and we have one hard copy here. Oh, okay. Well, that's happening. Are there any, are there any proposed changes to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, um, let's go ahead and go to public comment. Uh, there will be an opportunity for comment on the master fee schedule update later in this meeting. Uh, with that said, the council now welcomes all comments from the public on any other issues at this time. Uh, of course, we do not have any members of the public with us today, but you're still able to participate, uh, online. If you're participating online, please click the raised hand button and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. You'll be provided three minutes. Please remember to state your name and address for the record. Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor. So I do see, uh, one hand up right now. Will allow this person to unmute themselves.
Wonderful.
And, uh, should take just a moment. Then you'll want to state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes, I'll let you know when there are about 20 seconds remaining. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Meg. Um, I sent my address to the recorder earlier, um, for his purposes. Um, I just like, would like to comment on some of the, uh, things that have been going on around town lately. I'm sure everybody's well aware of what went on in Oregon City last week. Um, a lot of those people that were down riding in Oregon City, um, have attended numerous flag waves and other events in Sandy. Excuse me. A lot of them have extensive criminal histories and a couple are even still on probation for prior crimes related to their violent activities at alleged, allegedly peaceful rallies. Excuse me. They, they themselves have extensively documented their crimes on social media, but I've witnessed their intimidation and threats personally too. I was at the Have a Gay Day celebration in March. That day I watched as Proud Boys patrolled the park in packs, lurked on the sidelines of the Gay Day event space, and at one point strode menacingly through the middle of a group of kids, telling everyone to F off at the free country. It was appalling to see armed, out of town, adult men intimidating local queer kids. How, how does that even happen in Sandy? It happened because Proud Boys were called in by a local business owner to provide security for Russell Collier's intentionally provocative event. It shows you what little regard they have for law and order and the capability of our local police and what little regard they have for community unity and peace. The fact that Collier has planned an event in the plaza for the same day the Safe Group's Pride Celebration was announced a week prior belies his deliberately antagonistic intentions. Free speech can be protected without stirring the pot to purposely cause discord and terrorize locals. I hope the events in Oregon City last Friday have provided Sandy's leadership with a much-needed wake-up call. Obviously, ignoring the situation and hoping it will go away isn't going to cut it. It's a fact that the presence of the Proud Boys and other extremist groups is a tragedy waiting to happen. We cannot risk a wait-and-see approach when the potential consequence is trauma, assault, or even death to marginalized communities. I'm going to reiterate what a friend wrote when we were talking about this. The city council needs to denote the Proud Boys and other groups that bring people into town to threaten locals during events or when they're just doing their daily lives. This has been going on for a year now, when Alan Swinney was invited here to recruit, and it continues today. Neutrality is only serving to empower hateful speech and increase the likelihood of violence. The city council needs to find, oh, excuse me?
I'm just letting you know there are 20 seconds remaining, thank you.
Oh, sorry. The city council needs to find a way to support local efforts to combat hate, racism, homophobia, by attending, promoting, or facilitating events that actually accomplish these goals. And lastly, that first come, first served uh, policy regarding the plaza is creating safety risks in public places where groups want to speak or gather. This is just, it, it's, it's, it's an unattenable situation and you're asking for tragedy. I think one of your prime responsibilities is to ensure the safety of our citizens. Please do something about this upcoming event. Thank you.
Thank you for your public testimony this evening. I, I do have a que, a question off of that, though, Jordan. So where, where are we with the permitting of our Centennial Plaza?
Yeah, I had the same question. We're permitting starting July 1.
July 1st.
July 1st. So are we, are we aware to the SDC?
They permitted?
What's that?
Are these, these coming up, are they permitted?
No, no.
Or remember, if, if, now tell me if I'm wrong, but if no one's there, then no one's there. It's kind of like, isn't it like any other gazebo in the park where it's first come, first served unless someone has taken the initiative to do a permitted event?
Right, I mean, and, and we have broader concerns about how many people, kind of traffic impacts. Are they bringing things like tents and barbecues and stuff like that? I mean, you know, it's the difference between a small gathering and then large, you know, unpermitted events happening in our public spaces. And, um, later on your agenda, there's a master fee charges adjustment too for, for increasing the fee too. And we've absorbed a lot of overtime expenses, traffic impacts, impacts to our transit service, uh, because of these events. And so this will help us manage these events going forward. But it seems like this, uh, this weekend is right before we start that process, unfortunately.
Yeah, right, right.
And Mayor, I'll go ahead.
Public comment.
Yeah. Yes, Mayor, so I'll click on the next hand, uh, this person. Let's see here. Mayor, we've had this issue one time before, um, where somebody's using an older version of Zoom and the only way to allow them to talk is to temporarily promote them to a panelist. So I'll go ahead and just do that for a moment. Uh, so you'll be able to unmute yourself here in a moment. Please state your name and address for the record. And you'll have three minutes. I'll let you know when there are 20 seconds remaining. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Amaya Peralta and my address is 18230 Seaman Avenue in Sandy, Oregon. Um, so I just want to double check that you can all hear me.
We can, welcome.
Okay, awesome. So I'm a manager of a local youth grassroots organization in Sandy, um, called Students Advocating for Quality or Safe. I wanted to come before you all today to express my concerns regarding the recent PDX Proud Boy presence in Sandy and how the city has somewhat failed to condemn both the Proud Boys and the local church that harbors them. On March 20th, 2021, SAFE had an event, um, behind City Hall called Have a Gay Day, which provided mutual aid and safe space for LGBTQ plus folk and allies to gather. This event got lots of coverage and many Proud Boys and right-leaning extremists showed up to retaliate against our event. It got to the point where people were afraid to cross the street and we were forced to hide behind City Hall to ensure our safety. We showed up expecting to celebrate love and were met with hate. These same men are freely putting up QR codes around town, gathering in public settings like my younger sister's softball game, and waving flags in front of Taco Bell. I am 16 years old. I should not have to fear adult men preaching against my existence and threatening my safety. I gathered testimonies from my fellow peers and SAFE staff members. And Senior Chloe Kobo said, and I quote, "I feel unable to safely hold the hand of the girl I love. I am afraid of the people in my community who claim my love is impure. They say my love, which is the most innocent of love, is dirty and has consequently damned me for hell. I fear for my friends. My trans friends who are still learning to accept themselves struggle even more to accept themselves in an unwelcoming environment. A community like Sandy is a close-knit community. Yet many of us are shunned, demeaned, and hated by our fellow townspeople. We should be raising up those who feel unwelcome instead of continuing to spread hate," end quote. Um, Sandy is not a welcoming place for all, and until it is, Sandy will not be a safe, a safe place for the LGBTQ plus youth that resides within its borders. Condemn the Proud Boy presence in Sandy and take action to protect Sandy's queer youth. SAFE has dedicated a portion of our time as a campaign advocating for LGBTQ plus individuals, writing resolutions, accommodating and accepting queer folks, and planning events who can come together to celebrate love, life, and each other. We deserve to feel safe in a place like Sandy. We deserve to love openly without fear of hateful organizations threatening us with no consequence. We understand that the city's hands may be tied, but we hope that you can condemn these groups and create a space where we can begin to openly love ourselves and one another. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony this evening. Excuse me.
Okay, Mayor, uh, I'll click on the next hand now. Uh, you should be able to unmute yourself now. Please state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes, welcome.
Hi, thank you, can you hear me?
We can, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Councilors. My name is Janet Michaels and I'm a resident of Sandy. Um, I have emailed my address to the recorder. Um, I am here to talk about the ongoing chilling effect happening within the mountain community caused by weekly demonstrations and discriminatory acts in our public spaces that are clear efforts of intimidation and exclusion. As you've heard, within the last year, we've seen families and individuals. As you've heard, within the last year, we've seen families and individuals pick up their lives and move away from Sandy because of the political turmoil that is bubbling that has resulted in threats of violence. Doxing and harassment is happening online and within this community simply for speaking up against some of the extreme activities that some far-right Sandy residents have been deliberately escalating. For the last year, we have consistently seen members of recognized hate groups such as the Proud Boys coming into Sandy. This is evidenced by who comes to the weekly flag waves hosted by local self-described church preacher. Before the last Trump rally last week, we found about a dozen stickers glued to light poles and bus stops around town promoting an organization called Patriot Front. Patriot Front is an American white supremacist neo-fascist and American nationalist group which utilizes imagery of patriotism, liberty, and other widely accepted American values to promote its ideology. These groups are known for using violence and intimidation to push their agenda. We saw them at the Have a Gay Day event trying to intimidate a group of teenagers in Mining Park. We also know that many of them have violent criminal records. Another example and the main reason that I'm here today is the Gay Pride rally being held this Saturday in the plaza, which is being organized by the high school students advocating for equality who just spoke before me. Promotion for this event has been happening for over a month, and the previously mentioned preacher who usually takes over the plaza on Sundays to scream his hatred against gay and transgender people decided to organize a rally at the very, at the very same place on Saturday earlier in the day. Watching a grown man flex to local high schoolers hoping to exercise their First Amendment right for equality is an embarrassing look for both the city of Sandy but also the community whose leaders sit on their hands. Our First Amendment protects his right to stand and share these views of his without arrest, without legal consequences for expressing a point of view. However, legal consequences and arrest are very different from local leaders advocating against such hatred. This is slander. This is hate. It cannot continue to flourish unopposed by voices of civic leaders in Sandy. I believe that as a part of nonviolence, that means reaching out to elected leaders to ask for help in calming the tensions in our communities. I know Mayor Polliam has spoken out against violence in the past, and I think it's important for leadership to continue to do that right now. Silence breeds violence, and I'm dismayed by that this council has been so quiet this last year. If you're representing, if you're representing Sandy, it's important to represent and hear from all of us, including those outside your voter base. It's also important to use your position to hold our communities together rather than allowing your silence to keep pulling them apart. Sandy City Council should be reaching out to members of the community, especially to youth, to offer support for their efforts to make Sandy a diverse and inclusive town to all of its residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony this evening. Just a reminder to everyone to use the raised hand button if you're participating online or the star nine if you're participating via telephone.
Hey, Mayor, I see two more hands. I'll click on the next one. I'm having that same issue with the older version of Zoom, but you should be able to unmute yourself now. Please state your name and address for the record. I'll let you know when there are about 20 seconds of your three minutes remaining. Welcome.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Sarah Walker Dunn. I live at 15835 Dreamcatcher Avenue in Sandy. My daughter is a Sandy High School senior, incoming senior, and she will be participating in the Pride event this weekend. I have, as well as my husband, have volunteered to provide security for this event. I would like to reiterate what the previous three citizens stated, but I would also like to request that if it is not already intended that Sandy PD help provide protection for our youth in Sandy, I would like to request that that be considered. It's somewhat appalling to me that I and my husband and other parents are being asked to provide security against known violent offenders who are considering coming and protesting against equality. So I believe it's the responsibility of our police department to protect and serve all of its citizens, not just the ones that back the blue. And so my request is that this council, if you have not already done so, would look into ensuring the safety and protection of all the citizens that participate in the square this Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony this evening. Chief, you've already indicated that you're aware, obviously, there will be police presence this weekend. Yes. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Hey, Mayor, I see one more hand up. You should be able to unmute yourself now. Please state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes. I'll let you know when there are about 20 seconds remaining. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Christine Walker. I'm happy to email my address. I'm in the car right for the statements by the four citizens that just spoke. I also have concerns about attending the rally this Saturday with my teenage children, one of whom is going to be starting as a freshman at Sandy this year. And I'm really worried about the safety, especially given what happened in Oregon City this last weekend. And I was attending the Have a Gay Day rally across the street from the park several weeks ago, and it was really alarming what happened. And I hope that the city will denounce the Proud Boys from coming out to our local event and intimidating locals and especially kids that want to participate in the Pride event this weekend. They should feel safe and supported and protected by their community. So thanks for letting me share.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Okay, Mayor, I'll just take one more look at the list.
Just a reminder for the raised hand button or to dial star nine if you're participating via telephone.
Mayor, I don't see any other raised hands.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. Moving on on our agenda, we are now to our consent agenda, which has our city council meetings for minutes from our June 7th meeting, our professional audit services agreement, as well as Resolution 202117, the Sandy Enterprise Zone renewal. Counselor Hockenson, you had a question or two.
Yes, if I could have a brief education on the last item, the Sandy Enterprise Zone redesignation, what is it? Why is this important now?
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah, and so David Snyder, I think, is watching on Zoom and can chime in if there's specific questions I can address. But I think the staff report does a pretty good job explaining this program. This is essentially a property tax abatement for qualifying businesses that want to invest in Sandy. And I think the designated enterprise zone that we have within the city of Sandy is pretty much the entire commercial and industrial areas. We've, we haven't had a whole lot of success yet with this program. It was instituted in 2010. There's two different tracks. There's a three-year abatement and then there's a five-year abatement, and it's just on the improvements to the property. So, you know, the city would still get the property taxes and other jurisdictions would get property taxes from the land. But any improvements that could be evaded for for three years, if that business is going to create living wage jobs, that's I think equal to the median income jobs in Clackamas County. I think at the time, there's a few counselors that were seated at the time in 2010 when this was put into place. They added the hotel component because that's still one of our economic development goals is to get another hotel here in town. We have one business that is recently approved for construction in the industrial area. They're near Champion Way that is applying for this program.
Those approved by this council.
Is approved, right. Road fabrication. And, you know, we're strongly encouraging them to move through the application process on that. There's several of these in Oregon. I think there's one in Estacada and others in Clackamas County. The Clackamas County staff support us in this and helped us kind of, you know, re-up our application. We strongly recommend it as one of the economic development tools that we have here in the city of Sandy and one of the tools that the state of Oregon has. And we think it's a worthy program to, and really at a low cost for us. We think that the benefits of getting someone to invest and create these jobs, I give that a tax abatement outweigh the cost to us and, you know, losing out on the, those property taxes on those improvements. That hope answer some of your questions.
Yeah, yeah. So it's out there. We haven't used it a lot, and this just keeps it going, so it stays available for us in the future. And we've got this one small venture that may qualify, may not qualify.
Yeah, and with the, you know, hopefully the future development that can happen, you know, with the 360-second projects and stuff, there's, you know, future opportunities. And again, with that hotel, you know, we haven't had a whole lot, lot of luck. We've had some interest, but we just haven't reached that market threshold for hotel. But, you know, this program combined with the growth, you know, may push us over the edge. So we think it's worth keeping it tapped.
Excellent. Thank you. There's no more questions or discussion. Entertaining motion.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
For a second. Second motion by Counselor Pete, and second by Counselor Small to adopt the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye or provide me a thumbs up. Aye, opposed, nay, or a thumbs down. Motion carries. Moving forward to resolutions. So we have a public hearing that we're continuing. One second. All right, I am going to reopen our public hearing. Has been continued from our June 7th, 2021, a meeting to provide citizens an additional opportunity to comment on adjustments to the city's master fee schedule, including changes to sewer rates, water rates, stormwater rates, and park use fees. Please note that public testimony will be accepted after the staff report concludes. At that time, I'll provide instructions on how members of the public can participate and share their input. I'm now calling for any abstentions from the hearing body. All right, any conflicts of interest? We got.
Mayor, we do have one.
Do we have to do, I just have a question. It says, I think we're going to be doing this, so maybe into the future, some Kathleen is, considering this is a continued public hearing, hasn't she already declared any possible potential conflict of interest several times already on this given item? Yeah, we all have. Why do we got to do it each time?
Better safe than sorry.
Okay. All right, sorry, Kathleen. I was just, I was trying to say, that's it. Feel free. Go ahead.
No, just, you know, on the things that regard public works, pipes and sewer and water and stuff, I will recuse myself.
Thank you, Kathleen. Appreciate it. With that, staff report. Tyler.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you again for having me up here this evening. As has been previously discussed at length, we have the massive wastewater system improvement project that's underway right now. Part of that improvement is an additional rate increase to maintain coverage ratios and essentially ensure that we have the funding we need to pay for future debt service. And so what's being proposed tonight is a 15% increase effective with the July 2021 delink cycle for our sewer rates. In addition to that, we have a little smaller of a water rate increase of 8% that's being proposed. A even smaller and quite manageable stormwater rate increase of just 25 cents. That's the first increase in about 10 years in that utility. And then lastly, some changes to our park use fees are sort of even discussed a little bit earlier this evening, but essentially removing our current structure for reserving the main park gazebo and replacing it with a flat fee of $200 for residents or $300 for non-residents, and then adding the Centennial Plaza under that same umbrella of charges. These requirements have been, you know, noticed in most recently the Sandy Post, as well as Facebook. Numerous public hearings have been held first back in December, I believe, when we first brought the wastewater and water rate increases before council, which were ultimately deferred. We're still pretty needy in the pandemic and wanted to minimize those costs as long as we could. These have all been built into the upcoming budget for the biennium 2023, with the exception of the park use fee changes. Staff does not presume that this will be a massive, you know, revenue generator or anything that's going to warrant a significant change to the parks budget right now. So I don't think there's any concern there, but everything else is reflected in the upcoming budget.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right, with that, we'll go into public testimony guidelines for those who wish to speak. Please try to avoid repetition if someone else has already expressed the same thoughts. It is sufficient to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker, even if that's all you say. If you have materials that you wish to be considered by the body, they must be formally placed into the record of this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, please email your materials to recorder@ci.sandy.or.us. The staff will make sure your evidence is properly processed. To offer public testimony, if you're participating online, please click the raised hand button and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. I'm now calling for public testimony. Just a reminder, please state your name and mailing address for the record. You'll be provided three minutes each, and Jeff will provide you with a 20-second warning. Jeff?
Hey, Mayor, let's take a look at the list. And Mayor, I don't see any raised hands.
All right, Tyler, staff recap.
As presented, staff recommending a 15% increase to the wastewater rates, 8% increase to the water rates, a 25 cent increase to the stormwater rates, and then a restructuring of the parking speeds. One item I forgot to mention previously, and we'll just add right now is some of the feedback we heard at the last council meeting regarding parks use fees or whether or not the parks covered structures were really a great program to implement right now, charging a use fee over there. There is some concerns about how well can you manage at this point in time, and so we've opted to remove that from this resolution and just focus on the existing plazas and facilities that are being rented or reserved right now and make that our purpose.
Thank you, Tyler. So this is the last time we're kind of doing this. So is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
There's a second. Second motion by Counselor Hockenson, the second by Counselor Small that we close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye or provide me a thumbs up. Aye, opposed, nay, or a thumbs down. Motion carries. All right, our public hearing is now closed. I'm calling for discussion by the hearing body. We made it. We're here.
Let's do this.
Yeah.
What comment is it making? I'm going to keep it really short because I know it's not going to make any difference for me or anybody else. But I just see that the wastewater rates have been raised substantially to pay for our loans and the things it's going to take to make that thing work. And our stormwater rates have been raised almost minusculely, and we have a pretty significant cost in our stormwater fixes. It just seems to me that we're not balancing out between the two of them. And with that, I don't intend to change it. I don't want to make it a proposal differences, but in the future, if we are going to be balanced, I think we should look at how our stormwater rates are being looked at compared to how they are being fixed.
All right. Further discussion, or is there a motion to approve Resolution 2021-18?
That we accept the revised projects.
Sorry.
That's the wrong one.
Sorry. I just made a motion that we approve the Master Fee Schedule.
Resolution 2021.
Just a second.
Second.
It was a motion by Counselor Pete to approve Resolution 2021-18, a resolution amended the master fee schedules, but seconded by Counselor Hockenson. All those in favor signify by saying aye or provide me a thumbs up. Aye, opposed, and nay, or a thumbs down. Motion carries. I just would like to thank staff for all of your work on this. I know there's a lot. This is the second iteration. Just thank you for all of your work on this. We always appreciate it. Okay, moving forward to Resolution 2021-20, it's our supplemental budget. Tyler.
All right. So just to be a little bit repetitive from what I've already mentioned earlier tonight, we adopt the budget. Typically, at the end of that two-year period, we have some housekeeping in general cleanup that needs to be done to catch any, you know, changes or adjustments that have happened over the two-year period. So since we are nearing the end of the biennium of 1921, there's just some housekeeping items to discuss this evening. The first, and this is the presentation kind of by fund and what is required in order to budget a lot of have the supplemental budgets adopted. So have the listing of what's currently adopted, the revised appropriation, total amount of change. And so for the general fund, opposing $75,000 transfer from non-departmental contingency to two different departments. The first being administration to absorb the increased cost associated with the equity and compensation study that was implemented last year. And the second would be $50,000 to our legal department to offset additional legal expenses that were incurred throughout the biennium. The second fund that has some adjustments being made is the street fund. In this fund specifically, we have it categorized into operations capital. Uh, in this fund specifically, we have it categorized into operations, capital and contingency. There's no changes being made to the capital department, but we are proposing a $300,000 transfer from contingency to operations to pay for some higher than originally budgeted costs in the street recycling program that happened months ago, and then some over into the utility line item, which in that operations department. In the water fund, we are proposing a 800,000 $800,000 transfer from contingency to operations, mostly to absorb a good portion of the costs of the water meters that were installed. So in November of 2019, council authorized staff that transferred agreement with McKinstry to replace all the water meters with automated meter readers or automated readings. That was about $2.5 million as presented, 67% of that budget, a project rather, was paid for out of water, but the remaining 33% paid for out of sewer. The reason for that is that we use our water meters about half the year to bill for super consumption. And then in the summer months, we use the wear average for sewer. So instead of splitting it 50/50, we're trying to allocate it out based on what really, what the intent of that meter is used for. It's always to bill water consumption, but it's only about half the year to bill sewer consumption or happens built from an average. And then within the sewer department, sewer fund rather, we have a a change to reflect the increase in sewer fees that were collected. So about $2 million greater than the original budget. And then increasing the operations department by that same $2 million for a couple of purposes. The first being the 33% of the water meter replacement project that I just indicated. And then existed or repairs rather to the existing wastewater treatment plant, which, you know, have become more significant as we dive into that project. We're doing the I and I work right now. And replacing some of those laterals. So this will just sort of bring everything into balance, take care of the projects we have underway. Make sure we remain within all of our approved appropriations for Oregon budget law and sort of wrap up biennium 1921.
Any questions? There are motion.
I'm questioning. Okay. It was slow and I think I was in awe of all the changes. It's just interesting to me. Looked at some of these over the years and I'm not as old as some people on this council might be.
Here we go.
Pretty close. I just, it's just curious that there seem to be more this year than there have been for quite a while.
No way. Okay. I gotta push back on that.
Just, just, oh, I'm talking here. So what's, what's?
You guys did so many for the pool last time. We were moving things out of transit. We were moving things out of parks. Those are the craziest supplemental budgets I have ever seen in my.
Dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars out of contingency for the pool.
I've been so, I'm sorry. You just, I've been kind of proud with the lack of supplement, actually. So I'm sorry. I just, I, I, yeah.
Okay. Well, with that comment, I was that recognizing the mayor. One of my member in the conversation with the budget committee that they were interested in being informed about some of the changes that happened. And I was just wondering, had we interacted with the budget members that were not part of the city council and they've been aware of the changes such.
As we have not brought the existing budget committee members up to speed, but I will say is that about 98% of the changes that are presented tonight with the supplemental budget are factored into the budget that was adopted for 2123. And this is really just a cleanup component to sort of finalize the existing biennium before we enter the new biennium. So no, they have not been brought up to speed on these specific changes in this context, but it's built into the budget that was delivered today.
And I think they actually aren't.
And then we don't have.
There was a lot of attrition. Well, there was a lot of attrition on the committee, wasn't there? A lot of those people.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, it was a very public involvement and I know, I know there's a lot of people that were watching this very closely and some of the members I do know are still around. So I, it just was a comment that despite the fact that my memory is bad and it could not be as big a change as I thought it was. Humor me, I guess it is, and let know those who are still around know that we made these changes.
I'd love to comment on that. Just. Well, I actually compliment to the city council. That's what I was going back. Yeah, I always say the budget is, you know, a management tool and a tool of control. The council has, you know, stayed, you know, predominantly within the means that you set out in your plan. The things that, um, you know, that are being cleaned up here at the end of the biennium were known things or major projects that the council approved. That just didn't have enough information at the time when we developed the budget, you know, over two years ago. And if you look at the total amount, even the general fund to stay within, you know, the spending appropriations is pretty impressive that there was only with all the things that came comes up in the middle of a pandemic and wildfires and everything else, uh, to stay predominantly within the means and the appropriations is pretty good. Um, and this is the only supplement that we've done, you know, an entire biennium, which is, which is great. So kudos to you.
You just found that small little button, man. Cause I already told them in our weekly meeting, I was, I'm so proud. This is our only supplemental we did.
You found me. You found.
Okay. Well, anyway, I do want to compliment the staff and the financial organization to make sure this is not as money as it could be. So. And keeping it correct. I know that we've got a lot of rewards for doing the job right with our auditor and the rest of the folks that are watching this very carefully. So. Thanks.
Well, my only comment was thank you staff from someone sitting here. This has been the smallest amount in my memory, but this is great.
Jeremy's been around a long time.
And I don't want to be a little, I don't want to keep going on in this, but I was very impressed. I think, yeah, it was great.
Oh, Kathleen stands up. Go ahead, Kathleen.
Point of order for, um, a question, Mayor for and, and City Manager Wheeler on the resolution is 2021-20. I don't want to vote on the sewer water stuff. But if it's not, if it's not possible to, to separate it, I'll just recuse myself from the vote for this particular issue. Cause the, the two general fund appeals or administrative and, and litigation stuff, you know, is not a big deal. I can recuse myself from all of it, or I can recuse myself just, uh, and just vote for the appeals and litigation or the administrative and litigation part of it. So just let me know how I should proceed. Thanks.
Do what we did before.
Just split it up. Okay.
Yep.
That was oversight on my behalf.
So, um, so let's.
We need.
Do you need it now? Uh, do you need to, cause it's under 10%? You need to do a cut. Do you need to just coach us on what the motion needs to be?
So, uh, the motion would be adopting resolution 2021-20. With just the general fund components and then the second motion would be adopting 1-20 for water and sewer.
Okay, the first motion.
I'll make the first motion, which is to adopt, you doing, you want me to say it, the whole thing? Cause I, I'll make it, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2021-20 for the general fund.
There are second.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilor Small and a second by Councilor Pete's old. All those in favor signify by saying I. I oppose and they are thumbs down. Motion carries. Is there another motion?
Come on, roll.
Yeah.
Go for it. I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2021-20 that includes sewer, water and the street fund.
For a second.
Also.
And then, uh, Counselor, um, Walker, you're going to abstain, correct?
Abstating from that vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, all those and there's a motion by Councilor Small, a second by Councilor Exer. All those in favor signify by saying I. I oppose, give me a nay. Uh, there's an extension by Counselor Walker. Motion carries.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Under old business, bowl run water supply options decision.
Decision. That's right. Um, good, uh, good evening, Council. Um, so the decision before you tonight is concerning the city's approach to complying with, uh, the state of Oregon drinking water services, um, in our agreement with them. Uh, as far as submitting an action plan for how we'll address the crypto-spiridium treatment requirements for our bull run water source. Those options are either connecting to a point downstream of Portland's proposed, um, large treatment facility filtration plant or constructing our own treatment plant, um, and treating the bull run water. We had a work session on this item on May 17th. Uh, if you recall, the consultant presented an update on our water master plan and these options and a couple, and another option that the, the plan looked at. Uh, we also had a presentation from the city of Portland, uh, on the status and progress of their treatment plant, um, project. And we also heard from, uh, the neighborhood association of their regards to that project's impacts on, on the community and other options. Um, at the June 7th, uh, city council meeting, uh, we presented some background and chronology of the, the studies that have been done on the city's water sources and supply over the many years and those decisions made by the city councils that have led us to this point, um, in this decision. These studies, uh, that were looked at in the past included, you know, groundwater sources and wells, uh, developing our supply from the allotment from the Salmon River. Or purchasing bull run water, um, which ultimately the city council will, uh, decide to do in 2008. And then in 2013, the intertie and the pipeline was constructed for approximately $11 million to connect to the bull run system. So the staff recommendation, uh, you know, it is to continue with the bull run supply, uh, that, that, you know, includes the, the decision and that includes, you know, the environmental, the legal, the cost hurdles, the investments we've already made into the existing system to connect to the bull run source and and all the, the complications and issues that we see with trying to, uh, connect to the Salmon River source. And, uh, as we discussed too, in the next couple of years, we, we think we can include a study of looking at supplementing our supply, uh, with groundwater sources with a study there. And with the recommendation in the staff report was to, uh, go, uh, the route of actually modifying our master plan to see if that can be subbed out through that process with our consultants, since we have them on board currently, uh, include that as part of our water master plan. Uh, and I think that's probably a, a pretty smart way to approach it, um, and the most timely way to. And, and then the recommendation, as we outlined on, on June 7th was, uh, that it seems to be the best in terms of cost effectiveness for the city to build our own treatment facility, uh, rather than connecting to the city of Portland's filtration plant. This gives the council a little more control over future rates, control over how we build that plant, what kind of plant that is. It gets us out of the business, although we'll still be a customer of the city of Portland, the Water Bureau with their raw water. We have a little more control and out of the, the, the politics around, uh, the filtration plant and the purchase of the treated water, uh, which will be substantially more. It will cost the city more upfront in terms of capital costs and add to our operational costs, uh, but over at least a 30-year horizon. And beyond, it will be cheaper for the city to go that route, according to the, the preliminary work that we've looked at, um, with the water master plan. There's still a lot to be known about these costs, um, as you can imagine, uh, with how this plant would be designed and the pipe and, um, you know, and estimating those expenses for operations. But that will be done over the next year, uh, as we finish the water master plan. And our other part of this recommendation is to add, uh, further studies to groundwater sources, uh, during this year as well. Uh, so that's our recommendation, uh, is that city council direct staff to notify the city of Portland, uh, that we do not intend to purchase treated water. But intends to remain a wholesale customer, uh, for, uh, bull run wa- raw water. And then we also have the recommendation to notify the Oregon Health Authority, um, with our intent to treat the unfiltered bull run water, uh, prior to September 2027. And then finally, as part of that is amend the water master plan, ask a couple of work to include a study of the potential groundwater sources. So sort of mouthful there on the motion, but that's the decision before you tonight and our recommendation. Thank you.
Well, this is our third time with this in front of council. We've had a variety of debate conversations, the questions. Um, I'm ready to move forward with the recommendation. Now I'll let you guys, are there further questions and discussion? Or are we ready for a motion?
I have a quick question.
Okay.
Just in the motion, it says a, uh, and further direct staff to seek a proposal from Murray Smith to amend the fee and scope for the water master plan update to include a desktop study of potential groundwater resources in the Sandy area. And I'm, I'm sorry, my internet went out for a minute. Maybe that explained, you got that explained, but can you just clarify what a desktop study of the groundwater resources are? Cause I just, I want to make sure we are, um, evaluating those, those groundwater options pretty significantly or adequately at least.
Thank you, Mike, for chiming in, because I was going to ask you, because I actually changed that verbiage. I didn't know what a desktop study was by definition, but, um, you know, I have a, a mind, I have a a sense in my, in my mind of what the study should include, but, um, maybe, uh, Mike, what's a desktop study?
Well, you know, uh, with groundwater resources, there's an extensive database of well logs, you know, where wells are located, how much they produce, how deep they are, what aquifer they're in. And, uh, so desktop study would be reviewing, uh, you know, we draw a radius around Sandy and to review all the well logs in this area. And then if something looks promising, then you know, the, the, the city could go back and do a more elaborate study where we, you know, drill test wells. See what the, whether the, the, um, analysis of the desktop study, you know, is born out, you know, is there, is there, you know, developable groundwater in large enough quantities to justify the expense. See, you kind of do the high level study first. It looks good. Then we come back to the council with a proposal to do more elaborate, uh, analysis to see if, um, you to bear, see what bears out with those groundwaters.
Okay. I just would want to make sure that that desktop study boundary is, is big enough to consider areas outside of our UGR. But, you know, I mean, not going all the way to aggression or anything, but, you know, I think there might be more put, because I know some of, a lot of the Sandy area specifically is, is off limits for developing wells and stuff. So I want to make sure that we've included that desktop study boundary area to really, you know, go wide. So.
Uh, yeah, we can. I mean, part of the issue is, you know, we've got a lot of infrastructure piping and reservoirs and everything north of the city and east of the city. So anything that if we were able to find groundwater resources south or west of the city, there would be additional expenses in, you know, building reservoirs and pump stations to move the water back to Sandy. So we probably focus on the areas where we already have uh, pipes in the ground and reservoirs, uh, that we could connect to a groundwater source. And then if that didn't bear out, we'd look at it, we can cast a wider net and look at areas south and west of this city where we don't have pipelines and reservoirs.
In the, um, concerned for brevity, uh, I would like to say I agree with Counselor Walker about to make sure we take a good, strong look at these potential other water, uh, directions. And I think it's important to fact that we talked with, uh, City Manager Jordan about the Walker, uh, either about that same sort of thing. There are some good potential, I think.
All right, our motion.
Sure. Have to read it. I move just direct staff to notify the city of Portland and the Oregon Health Authority Drinking Water Services Program with Sandy's intent to treat unfiltered water from the bull run system prior to September of 2027. And further direct staff to seek a proposal from Murray Smith to amend the fee and scope for the water plat- water master plan update to include a desktop study of potential groundwater resources in the Sandy area.
There are second.
Also.
There's a motion by Counselor Hockenson, a second by Counselor Sheldon. All those in favor signify by saying I. Give me a thumbs up. I oppose, they nay, or a thumbs down. Motion carries. With that.
Kathleen froze. We didn't get her vote.
Okay. She comes back while I ask her.
I, I, I said thumbs up.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Sorry.
Uh, all right. Moving forward under old business, um, cool exploratory task force bylaws clarification. I'll introduce it.
Sure. So, uh, the council established the cool exploratory task force, uh, on April 19th. And there was discussion during that meeting, um, of the importance of exploring multiple options related to the future of the aquatic center, um, rather than only looking at reopening the existing facility. But while the discussion occurred, um, the bylaws themselves were never actually changed. And so what's in front of you today is a recommendation from, uh, the, the subcommittee that's overseeing this, um, to go ahead and make that, uh, bylaws change. And there were, there have been other things brought up by counselors, um, in, in recent weeks, a couple of those, uh, include a possible deadline for the task force to complete this work. Another thing is a look at kind of the broader vision or plan for the community campus and how this work might fit into that. So this is also an opportunity to have, uh, that conversation, but the, the concrete issue in front of you also is just amending those bylaws.
That's great. Uh, yes. So what I want to do is Counselor Hockenson also reached out. I don't think all of us were on there. Just I think it was task force, simple, the mayor, some staff. and some staff about, you know, we've had a conversation councillor Hockinson. And I think some of us one on ones throughout time of just, no, we've got this aquatic center sitting right there in the middle of this, you know, property that we own for the Sandy community campus. There's the aquatic center, there's the front portion that kind of interacts with Pleasant Street, then there's all the recreational stuff behind it. And some of this is, is all right, we got this task force doing the pool exploratory, right? Should we open the current aquatic center? Do we want a new one? All the stuff we're talking about here in the bylaws. But it also is interacting, right? With that property, just, you know, big picture as well, you know, it all needs to kind of come together. It's kind of an all encompassing plan. And so councillor Hockinson kind of talked about, well, maybe it should be a lot of the same pool task force people that are also kind of tackling that. Maybe we, but maybe we just want to have the folks that are kind of investigating the aquatics there. Maybe we just want to figure that out first. You know, before we do anything else. More than anything is I just wanted, instead of just as mayor taking out a magic wand and saying, let's do this. I just wanted to kind of have a broader conversation with council about, you know, do we strategically want, you know, this committee to just kind of, you know, figure out that pool question? And then maybe go broader afterwards, or do we want to kind of just take that on now and let that committee kind of decide how they're going to tackle stuff? And then I'll just kind of shut up. I'm going to let councillor Hockinson go first.
So yeah, I just want to clarify, there, there's really two things going on here. So we have a task force which the bylaws apply to. So we're looking for just clarification and that clear direction on the task force, which is hundred percent pool. The subcommittee of Carl, myself and Kathleen was, was titled in that email when you sent it at the beginning of the year, the aquatics committee. But as we've discussed, its role was really community campus and our focus has been to look at and start to gather all aspects of which pool was just one thread. So my request to the mayor was, can we rename the aquatics committee to the community campus committee? And that, that's, that's where we started this up.
Yeah, that's fair. So me personally, the, the, I would like the pool to be dealt with first. And the reason being is that, is that I agree that the community campus is important and I'd like to see us, you know, move forward with that, just like everybody else. But I don't feel like we can adequately do that without a resolution on the pool. And meaning that, are we keeping that pool? Are we building a new pool? Are we keeping parts of that pool? Because to me, that's like the linchpin of the whole thing. And without, without knowing where we're going as a community on that one piece, I don't feel we can move forward on the rest of it. Because if we're going to, let's look at just the demolition of that upper building. If we're not keeping that pool, then that should all be demolished together, right? And so, you know, those are areas that until we have that information before us, I, I don't feel like we can adequately move forward in a, in a economical or developmental manner.
I'd like to weigh in here, um, because I, I joined the committee because of my interest in the community campus as a whole. And the, the fact is, is that we have a Parks and Trails master plan that has a plan for that community campus. And there's folks there. We have funding, we have, you know, interest in, we do not have a developed park in the whole northeast quadrant of Sandy. And we've been waiting for this plan for a long time. And we've been fiddle farting around with the pool for a long time. And I appreciate the comments that you just made, Laurie, because of councillor Smallwood, because it really does, you know, it, it's a good point to bring up because things are kind of interconnected to some extent. You know, for me, the, the visual of this is that you kind of have the pool and you have a community center and you have the parks and trails. And for me, I think if I was, you know, looking at it, I would be kind of forming the Parks and Trails Committee part of it to really refine and start getting bids on some stuff. That would be the Parks and Trails Committee itself. It would have some technical experts for the skate park, for the pump track or whatever. And just let those guys start moving forward on some aspects of developing the parks and trails part of it. We already even are applying for a grant for the trail connecting down into the Sandy River Park. So I feel like that can kind of start, you know, start in some format. It's not going to be moving very fast or very, you know, forward quickly, but it needs to kind of, there's a lot of energy behind that. The community center though, is really tied in with what you do with the pool. And, and that's really something that for me, that new person that gets hired for the community center is critical to that, to those decisions, to that staff work. And I think that, you know, for the pool, you know, whether or not, you know, those options you just laid out there, councillor Smallwood, you know, are critical and into integral to decisions about the community center. So I, I kind of agree somewhat with you as far as kind of, you know, making some decisions with the pool, but, but I don't want to wrap up all the parks and trails part of it, because there's.
Yeah. Yeah. Kathleen, and I totally hear what you're saying. And, and actually I think you and I agree on this. But what I, what I hear you say is two different things. We're, we're discussing whether the task force should include the community campus as well as the pool. And you're talking about the Parks Board dealing with the parks. And to me, those are two separate issues, but maybe, maybe they're not.
Well, I guess my question, just real, real quick, is what's the property zone asked today? Listen, this is why I posed, this is why I posed that question, guy. Yeah. We don't even know if it's going to be a park. Now, I'm not saying it shouldn't be, right? And I'm advocating that it's not going to be. I'm just saying this, there was never a decision made for it to be
Right.
a park. So the idea that we now have a master plan and I, and I'm happy we do, right? And I think there's a lot of elements that we're going to want to do that, but I just, we have, there's just never been the decision to actually make it a park. That, that's kind of my whole point on why we need a committee looking at what we want going into those properties. Now, once we make the decision, okay, the back parts, and I think there's like a ninety-eight percent chance it's going to go there. But once that committee says, all right, the backside is going to be a park, then you start plugging in that, that parks master plan. But I think it feels a little bit like the cart before the horse right now by doing it that way.
And in which case, if you're looking at that, then, then I, then I would, I would propose two separate committees. Right? Because again, that pool has got to be dealt with. And I just think it's a big ask to ask one committee to deal with both the pool and the community campus at one time. That's all.
And I'm not asking them to do that. Yeah.
Laurie?
Yeah, please.
So once again, there's the task force and the, and the three of us committee. What was your comment in regards to the three of us or the task force that's the pool?
Well.
Or both?
Both. I think that's a, I think it's a big ask.
I just wanted to clarify.
For, because I mean, you're talking about a lot of moving pieces. To me, there's a lot of moving pieces. And so for one group, you know, to, to deal with all of that, because, because let's go, let's fast forward a little bit. I want, I would like a timeline on this task force. I want a timeline of what, of what we're going to do with that pool. I don't want this to be open ended. I don't want to have this conversation two years from now. To be, to be really frank, right? And so I want a timeline on what's happening there with, with, with where we're going, because to me, if it's open ended like it is right now, there's always going to be the school of thought that we don't like the outcome. We're just going to wait. Right? We really want a pool. We really want that pool. I'm not saying that's the case. But so we'll just kick the can down the road as long as it takes till we get the answers that we want, right? I don't want that. I want, I want some good research. I want some data coming back on what the right solution is in a timely manner.
Just got a Carl. Carl's really been kind of waiting.
Yeah, sorry.
It's fine. I want to make sure I hear from the council about where we are, because the three of us really are trying to be reflective of what the council wants to do here. And that's really crucial for me. So not to be disagreeable, but there are, there are disagreements within even the three of us. I believe that because of the way we are organizing ourselves with this new change in the policy is that, and the, the direction from council we're hoping to get is that there will be two organizations. One that just deals with the aquatic, that's on a public and involved process that is going to go as fast as we possibly can. In fact, we approved some operational money in this current biennial budget. And in my mind, that indicates to me that we want to do something that will be opening a pool within the next two years. I'm hoping it will be sooner than that. So we have that organization, that's group of nine of us who are going to focus our energies on the aquatic part. But then there are the three of us who have had this conversation a couple of times now that we need to be focused on also what the rest of this community center is going to look like, including parks, including buildings and who knows what else that could be part of that. And I think between the two different organizations, we can move with two different timeframes, two different directions to make sure we do include both of those items. It is a big piece. If we were to take the aquatic group of people, nine people and say, we're going to have you do the, the pool and the rest of the community center, it's going to be too big a task. It's just way too many.
I feel like the three of you are like a ad hoc committee of the council that's tasked with, and then, and, and as one of the and one of the things you guys are doing is figuring out what are we going to do with the pool first? You know, I mean, you're, you're, you're an ad hoc committee of the council for the greater community campus. But you're, but you're figuring, see, I almost, because in my head, I'm almost feeling like this pool committee is a subcommittee of the community campus effort.
To a degree it is.
Yeah.
The pressure, the energy, the time, things people talk about is the pool, right? I mean, just around this group here, we are all focused on wanting to do something about this pool.
So are we set up? And I'm going to go to you, do you guys, I want to go to staff first. We feel like we're set up correctly. Like, should our committee be the commute to Don's point, the community campus with bylaws and everything for, for, you know, I'm trying to figure out what's the proper way of doing this where we have kind of these council liaisons representatives who are representing our broader sense as a council on the greater community campus effort. They're trying to answer this pool question first. It's kind of a subcommittee of that overall effort. But what's the right way of kind of setting that all? Up. Cause I feel like we've maybe gone too far with the pool thing without first doing the community campus oversight. Does that make sense?
Yeah, well, you know, if the if the councils are trying to address this key question first.
Yeah.
Right? And I think that's, you know, something that we probably think is a smart move, right? Because so much of that campus in the future, the campus is dominated by the pool. So if you're trying to seek the answer to the question, do you keep the pool? Do you reopen that pool? Do you invest in that existing pool versus a new pool? Is a pool even a part of the community campus plans and the vision? Then maybe you start with that. Or flip side of that is you continue the work that you've already done, surveys, polling to figure out, okay, what is the vision for the campus as a whole? And is aquatics a part of that? Yes. Okay. What kind of aquatics? And then you dive down into the.
But part of the problem though is, is now we have like a parks master plan for the community campus, right? And I almost feel like, and not take it, that's not a problem. I'm just part of the equation. And so I almost feel like that parks master plan should be getting presented in front of this ad hoc committee of the greater community campus.
Exactly. Yeah. All right. So.
Go ahead.
On the board.
Well, Don's going to go on, and then we'll go to you, Kathleen.
On the board back there. We do this up in our last meeting in here. The remnants of it are still on there. It's basically a bunch of circles with lines, because what we're talking about is an integrator function, something that integrates a lot of things that are moving on. So the three of us are, are with, with Jeff are operating as an integration function. One of those key functions we're trying to integrate and direct priority one is the task force for the pool. But to your point, the parks and the whole Parks and Trails Board is another function that has to get integrated. So we see some integration opportunities. We want to meet with them. We want to start talking across reference. We know we've got this new director coming on board. We don't know what vision he, she, they will have, right? So we need to integrate that as well. And so we see ourselves kind of doing a lot of that. Now, to Laura's point, or
You can say, Laurie, we've always done first names before.
Yeah. So Laura's point, this is a big deal with a lot of moving parts and can we adequately manage it? It's going to take more staff time. We've also talked in our last meeting about the need to bring on a consultant to help with some of that integration function. So there will be some asks that we come back to kind of start putting those pieces together. So that, that's the vision.
I feel like we all share the vision. Honestly, I think it's, we're talking all around. I think we all share the vision, just how to get it set up.
So that's, that's what we thought as a subcommittee as an integration.
Yeah.
It's important to be able to hear from the rest of the council, because the three of us.
I like these kind of conversations.
We have a lot of conversation and we don't always agree. So I, I would love to hear how the rest of the council has say his feelings about it, where we should be moving in our direction. Are we on the right?
So what's that Kathleen's in the queue now, go to Jeremy. Yep, Kathleen?
Yeah, I just think that there has been a huge amount of work with the residents in that area who want a park. Our Parks and Master Plan calls for a park. We've got some, we've done the surveys of, you know, we've done individual site plans for Ponder, Champion, Deer Point and the community campus and got feedback from that. And so I, you know, I feel like, you know, we're about to adopt this Parks and Trails master plan and I'm confused when people say, well, there might not be a park there. I just, I don't understand what public process we might be pursuing that wouldn't wouldn't get us a park there in the next, you know, three months. So if, if there's something out there, I guess I don't know about it, but I understand there's a need to adopt the Parks and Trails master plan first. But, you know, but as soon as that is done, my hope is that, you know, I believe that the community campus part, part of it, and again, not the swimming pool, not the community center, but the actual, you know, park in the back there with the trails and the playground and stuff like that is something that we can pursue and not cut off options for whatever you do with the rest of it and cut it. It doesn't have anything to do with demolishing the buildings or anything like that. So I think that's something that would involve the Parks and Trails Advisory Board. It would involve some specialists, you know, technical advisors and stuff, but that would be kind of a separate committee, but, but under overseen by the us three, you know, committee members, but it would be a separate committee. It wouldn't be getting done by the pool people. It'd be getting done by the park people. And then there might be a third committee in the future to deal with this whole idea about the community center and what programs you might offer, or if we don't have a community center and we continue to have our original community center, senior center. So that's how I see it. But I'm really, you know, I, I swear, I'm, you know, I feel like I've been waiting so long for this Parks and Trails master plan to get done. And I don't want to wait around for however long it takes for us to figure out the pool thing before we can kind of move forward on our park in that area. So.
Thank you, Kathleen. And just so I'm not lost in translation, I, I too, that's why I think it's one, this probably will be one, end up being one of the silliest back and forth we've had. Because there is like a ninety-nine point nine percent chance there's park. My only point is, is I've yet to see the public process that has, ends with that as a park yet. We just, we got to go through that process and get that done. That's all. Jeremy, go ahead.
Yeah, we have to adopt that part. Yeah. So, um, so just so unclear, because I guess I'm not picking it up in what the staff report said there. That's what I was trying to, why I'm confused. So we, we're looking at just changing some of the bylaws or whatever here, right?
Yeah, you're just missing, I'm sorry to interrupt. It's just what you're missing is, and I kind of alluded to it myself, there was a, a request that came from Don to be his mayor to change this to a broader community campus deal. And so instead of just making that decision, I decided to bring this discussion to council.
Okay. So the members that we picked for a pool would now be the members for the whole camera. And that's not what I thought, but that's what I just heard from. Oh, is it? What you just said was making that the community campus. That's not, so I guess what it was that you were asking.
So maybe we can take it two fold. Maybe we should just
Yeah.
take the motion and pass the bylaws and then move to the second part. So the first part's just to change the bylaws for the pool committee with those people we've already approved.
Right. But it does sound like it's the same three councillors doing both.
Same.
I think Jeremy is on point because he is saying that it is the same people doing both.
Well, I didn't know. That's what I was just trying to figure out. Was there a request for a second thing?
Not the other six people that we appointed, right? So they're, so if
Yeah, I'm with you.
So this, the task force, they'll start meeting, I think the first meetings, at first week of July. So they'll start meeting, they'll put together that schedule, that calendar and so forth and march towards it. The subcommittee that was appointed by the mayor in the beginning of the year is, was called the aqua, the aquatics committee. And that's what we're looking at. When I, in my discussions with the mayor early on, it's like, do you want me to look at the community campus or just the pool? It's like the community campus. So we've been looking at the community campus all along, but it's just fixing the name that hadn't followed. And whether the same three councillors should be involved in both is a, is a great discussion and perhaps not, you know, but. I meant to bring that.
I think it's. I think it's a great conversation. It's like a whole work session that we have anything else to do in work sessions at all. But it's, I think it's a great.
Yes, yes, we can, if you can find the time.
And that's okay, because we can use city council time as work sessions. There's nothing saying we don't. It just, you know, just get through.
But there's a stringer of things that need to be cited on, and some of that is the timeline we're talking about. Not just on the pool, but on the other items, the buildings, the parks, the what we do with the community center. So there's a fair amount of stuff that the whole council probably should be bolded, at least in approving. If not, well, guiding us.
So can I finish my thing is, can we do go back and to Don's point there, can we split the two conversations up? So I'm not getting this, like, can we finish with just this and then add that as the follow-up discussion of whether we do that or not? Because that way we take this out of it, of the second piece of the the conversation, because I guess that's where I'm trying to wrap my head around what I'm reading, what's not there. It's asking to, for me to think about these things that are brand new that I haven't read. But I think this is really simple right here in my mind.
The first step is with the aquatic part we talked about, so.
Well, they're
I'll throw a motion up there.
Yeah.
I I move to approve the revised pool exploratory task force bylaws.
I, yeah, cuz I I want a timeline put into this, into these bylaws. I want some sort of timeline put in to this, whether it's it six months, a year. I I want, I want a resolution to the pool in a timely manner. I, like I said, I don't want to just keep going because we're not getting the answers that we want. We're not getting the result we want. So I want, I want this pool. I want a timeline.
Can can we, maybe we should suggest, how about if I suggest that you tell us how soon you want to hear that timeline? And give us a chance to look at what that timeline should entail. Because you could say, let's have it done in the next twelve months.
Right.
And have one installed at whatever it is, whatever level. But we may not be able to do that with the expertise that we're bringing on with the aquatic committee. There, I think there's more than enough expertise in there that we could certainly come up with one to present to council and say, here, we can do it.
The secret to a timeline is, is figuring out, how much time do you guys reasonably need?
Yeah.
And at the same point, though, finding the timeline that gives you the amount of time you reasonably need, but also puts you under the gun to get it done, right? That's a good time.
Yeah, so let me volley that back to you, yeah, cuz that that's, that was gonna be my response. Yeah, you tell me.
I'm not sure if I know that. So to come back to the plan, you know, I think, I think we're in that six to twelve month range. I think that's reasonable.
I guess instead of a timeline, I guess maybe I reef, I would like to rephrase that. It would be maybe come back to council with some milestones, like maybe it's a milestone, whether or not it's a timeline for a finished product at that time. But a milestone, like maybe it's a year from now, hey, or maybe it's six months from now. It could be sooner than that, but just as a, the update to that, because I don't want to put in a box something I don't understand or know enough about, say, am I giving, am I agreeing to something that's, you know, like, not feasible?
So I think you can ask for an extension, right? Like, hey, we need a little bit more time. So we we can bring back and planned to bring back to the council the plan, right? We wanted to get the committee together, let them develop the plan. It's gonna take two or three times to get, come together, just like we did our goal setting. They'll do their goal setting. I'll try to facilitate that. But we can bring back that plan. We can also put a sunset on this task force so that it expires at some time, nine months down the road without council approval or six months down the road without council approval.
That's done at the state level all the time.
Yeah, right.
You know, one, one option, so I I can throw some wrenches in here, but.
Don't you the rent? I called on you not for rent.
To maybe Council Smallwood's, you know, request, one of the, one of the things you may want this task force to look at immediately. Because where the wrenches come in is on, if you read perfect article two, there's a lot there. I mean, six to twelve months is probably doable, but you will need consultant help. You know, I know you guys are engaging with, with some now to do the operational cost. But as the subcommittee starts expanding and looking at options for the campus, including rec centers as aquatic incorporated with that, your operational models might change. Now, that aside, but I was gonna say is maybe one of the first things the committee just looks at right off the bat to give the council recommendation is the existing pool. Does it reopen or not? Is there still longevity in that? You know, and make that, cuz then you can go on to the next options that are gonna take more work in looking at the future.
As a subcommittee, we looked at that option.
What option?
Exactly what Jordan said.
I didn't hear.
So focused on just bringing back, what would it take to bring back the existing pool? And the pushback is, was fairly broad, including those who interviewed. Most people want to look at the, the, the set, right? Not just look at what would it take to do this, but also compare and contrast that to if we were to start over new or do a major remodel or, you know, so there's variations. I think we can meet the dates. I think we can come back with some reasonable approaches. People, I mean, building pools is a rocket science. People have done it, so I, we don't need to have firm production, you know, construction rate quotes. But we, we can come back with numbers.
January one gives us almost seven months. For a report.
Yeah, and like I said, I'm not, I'm not looking for like a, if you guys need an extension, then so be it. I just want to make sure that we're good in someplace. That's all.
So define it for us a little bit. The aquatic portion of this, I want to be just have a motion made.
Yep.
Would like to see us happen a completed plan by January one twenty-two.
Yes, yeah, a completed idea of we're keeping that pool, we're building a new pool. We're going to the voters, whatever.
Yeah, strategic.
A strategic, it's strategic path, path forward. That's a great way to put it.
That you're gonna start fleshing out more.
Yeah.
You just caught that, right?
Yep.
All right, so the, so I'm gonna restate the motion.
Sure.
Or do you want to amend it?
I'll just amend it with, I'll just amend the motion, including the January one timeframe for a path forward.
Seconded by Counselor Pete Sol. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, name? Motion carries. All right. Moving on, or do you guys want to have this other conversation? Are you good for now with the pool?
Yeah, we have the pool direction.
All right, cool.
We're gonna keep our name. We'll keep our committee name for now.
For now, yeah.
We know what we're gonna do.
All right. I think everyone kind of broadly heard we're all on the same page, too, so. All right, new business, Sandy Net Advisory Board member appointments and some other stuff.
Yeah, so council, we had a request, well, we anticipated a question to pull this from the consent agenda with questions. And I think, I don't think we'll have as in-depth of conversation as the last bylaws conversation. This, in addition to having some members be appointed to our Sandy Net Advisory Board, there was some recommendations from the interview committee regarding the bylaws for Sandy Net Advisory Board. Greg, you wanna go ahead and introduce the recommendations and the folks that they selected for the, for appointment? I think that one doesn't work, actually. You gotta come to the staff.
Good evening, council. I guess I'll kind of just recap, cuz it wasn't the consent agenda, what the proposed changes were here. And it, it looks like the, the two major ones were to adjust the bylaws of the senior advisory board to allow for individuals that own the business within city limits to also serve on the board that may not reside within city limits or the Oregon Trail School District boundary. And also that that the panel recommended that the council liaison also be designated as a voting member to the advisory board. And I believe those were the only two changes that were supposed to be made to the bylaws.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna start with you, Kathleen. You, you mentioned you had a question earlier.
Yeah, I'm, I think, first of all, they have a great group of people to work on this. I'm really impressed by the caliber of folks they got on the advisory board. I have no issues with the idea of having a business owner on there. Or I think they, like the other advisory board, also allow one member to be outside the city limits but within the UGR or something like that. That seems really appropriate. The only thing that I was just kind of questioning a little bit was the role of our liaison. And this isn't anything personal about Sandy Net or about, you know, our liaison or anything like that. It's just kind of a process question of what is the role of our council liaisons? And, you know, my, I guess my preference would be that our council liaisons, you know, currently do not have voting rights as, as, as liaisons to these advisory boards. And I guess I, you know, I don't, unless there's a really good reason as to why they should be voting members, I would prefer to see us kind of treat our advisory boards consistently. You know, I, I can't imagine if I was the liaison to the Sandy Net that there would be a proposal to have me be a voting member. I don't know, but I, I just think it's something that, you know, it's just kind of confusing the roles. I, I really want to hear from our advisory boards and, and as it stands, you know, our, our liaisons that we had on the park board were wonderful assets to our advisory board, brought us a lot of insights, had no problems speaking up, giving their opinions. You know, really moving the discussion one way or the other, but they did stop short of, of voting. And so that's one thing that, that was the only one that I thought that I would, you know, pass all this in a heartbeat, except for the voting membership of the advisory board for our liaison roles.
I'm gonna start over here and then I'll go to you, counselor.
Oh, no, I'm not raising my hand. I was pointing at Don. Wasn't the one that brought this up.
It's my fault. This was actually a suggestion I made for a couple of reasons. And I, I will acknowledge that to Kathleen's point, it's not consistent with maybe the way the advisory boards are working now. It is consistent with how our task force and other things could work. The, the challenge here is we have a brand new board or in that, you know, none of these people, well, only one has served before. But they haven't really been serving in a long time. So there's one challenge. The second is that you know, we have, it, so it's different than a parks where we've got this continuity of expertise that's, that, that is there that just kind of sustains, or even the planning commission where, where that expertise is, is preserved. I, I think, you know, in Jeremy, we have a lot of expertise, a lot of passion. And what I didn't want to see happen was him relegated outside of there where he couldn't use that long-term perspective. And he's got the longest-term perspective on sending out of anyone right now. Want to make sure that that's still important. Now, to Kathleen's point, I, I would vote for you, Kathleen, just, I just want to say that. But that's, that's why I recommended that this, maybe it's not the right thing, but that's why I put it out there.
Thank you, appreciate that. Carl?
Yeah, I, I think I'm on the same path as Don is and that's, it was me that was on the test, this particular committee. I would probably go the way we should be the rest of the committees, but it's a non-voting. But in my mind, Jeremy has a special position in this particular arena, has always been that way. Although I am not the oldest one on this council, I have watched this over the years where it has been a considerable benefit to have Jeremy on that committee influencing it, maybe not the only person with the votes, but at least having a chance to be able to express his opinions, be part of that. And I guess I put on the table Sandy Net as proof, this has not gone wrong. This has not been the bad thing that might have happened to us. This has actually been one of the best things that's happened to us. And you take a look at the pandemic that has created so much of these isolated positions where we have one of the best internet situations in the state to be able to depend on, grow and to keep on moving through. So in my mind, Jeremy being Jeremy, I would be willing to say that I'd like to see him be a boy. For the reasons that Don has mentioned.
Lori?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna disagree and, and the reason being is that I feel that the council liaison on boards, just like Kathleen has already addressed. You know, our rule is to be a liaison and we come here and we vote on things that are presented to us from that board. So I feel it's a, what's the word I'm looking for? I feel it's a detriment to that board to have a council member that can vote on decisions. Jeremy's absolutely knowledgeable and I'm sure he can lead some great discussion. I'm sure he can give valuable input, but I, I think it's a disservice to the board of volunteers from people in the community to have a counselor who can sit in on a committee and vote and then turn around and vote at the council level as well. So I think it, I think it takes away from the community's ability, from the citizens' ability to serve on those boards. And it's giving council double votes and I don't, I don't think that's right.
I guess. Carl, I, I'm curious, cuz I really am kind of on both here. I'd like to ask you something. You know, cuz the Arts Commission was a new commission. And you were the liaison on that. So I mean, why, why is this any different than us, maybe you a voting member on that Arts Commission?
Easy to say.
Okay.
When we selected the Art Commission folks, we purposefully went after artisans within the community.
Yeah.
And there was a little bit of a struggle at the beginning, partly because it was such a brand-new committee and there were some real struggles about how to just organize themselves. But there were several on the committee, about half of them who were artisan types. And as we've talked about, there are much fewer of those on this particular committee that have been involved in sending it all the way through. So in my mind, the difference is, is the, the people that are on the committee makes a difference to me. And I guess I look at sending it as such an important part of the way the city is viewed, the way it moves its business, the way the economic development is positioned, and it's one of those that I would like to see this one be moved. And I'm not sure I agree with the double count. I, I, I don't want, you know, be in big disagreement there, but to me, he's one of seven people that are gonna be voting on that one. He's one of seven people to be voting on this particular council. So to me, that, that's the difference between the Art Commission. And maybe, look, look this. Stan, the Art Commission didn't do so well.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, but for other reasons, not because, not because.
Oh, you might go?
Sure, I, I want to say the I gotta side with. And the logic is, this is more unique than a Parks Commission. I mean, this is kind of almost like a, it's almost like a, an apartment that has a commission assigned to it, right? Because it's also a business model.
Yes.
Outside of just not trying to minimize anything, but where we're gonna put our parks. This is something that has a little more effect on us fiscally as well as, you know, to the community overall. So it's a unique position. I, I do struggle with one thing. I do struggle creating a bylaw for a specific person because what if that specific person leaves? But I do support a member of council voting on that because of the uniqueness of it as opposed to the Parks Commission or.
I would say that Sandy Net would not be the success that it is without the work that Jeremy's done and the, and the staff. The two of those, you know, groups have made it just a complete success. What I would ask is, and, and I think that, you know, he didn't have a vote before, but he was able to kind of affect the direction and the success that we have today. And I'm so proud of what he's done. And I'm just gonna ask, you know, can, can he continue to have that influence and success without having a vote on the board?
He, he did have the vote before.
Then maybe you should talk on that.
Great.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you, very humble about the comments. I didn't ask for this and that's why I had done, I told him to bring that up, Rich, cuz I didn't, I didn't suggest this. That being said, I did actually, I was the chair of the board for, for ten years because I was elected by the group over and over again. So now, that, in that sense, is there anything we voted on? No, I think maybe one thing and as a chair is the last thing we, I, you know, you know, there was never a tie-breaking vote, right? Like, there was nothing, right? So as that goes, in that instance, I think you're right. I think, I mean, I think you all know, I, I can make my opinions known when I want them to be known. But, but that's not the, what's, that's not the point of the liaison is to, neither is it was the chairs to make your point known either. It's to dialogue with those that are there. As I said, you know, I think there is the one thing that Don had brought up before, which I think is that this is a very new board in that and 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 in going forward with that. Now, that being said, we have these task force that are slightly different, but they act in the same way in a lot of ways, uh, they're just for smaller durations of time. So um, in that, you know, out of um, I I'll just I'm going to abstain from voting.
All right. So anyway, is there a motion on the floor?
Make two two motions. Can we have the one? The the people I get that we're appointing changes of the bylaws for the business owner and outside.
See, let me separate out the
And then set it for out that other position.
Quick comment before
Yeah.
Before we did the motion, I I just having sat on those interviews, uh, every one of these candidates, we spent a lot of time talking about everybody else. But these candidates were excellent. And uh, they they have all kinds of experience, whether it's technical, business owners. And we even have a certified CPA auditor, financial type. So I think it's a great set of expertise to really help set that financial and technical future. And so anyway, I was excited about that.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
So and you guys might want to push me off the building here a minute, but if if we're in a position where we feel that a council member that the liaison needs to have a vote, then are we going about this the right way? Maybe they shouldn't be an advisory board. Maybe it should be something different. Sorry, sorry, Stan. I can feel I can feel your, I can feel I can feel it. And I'm just posing a question. I'm just posing a question because if we're in a position, and I'm not disagreeing, and I and I hear what you guys are saying, right? Totally hear it. Um, but but then maybe it shouldn't be an advisory board and maybe just a name. It should be something different. I don't I don't know. I'm just asking.
Problem is, is they're not really driving. They're not like they're not driving towards anything. Like an ad hoc committee to me is we form that because there's a very specific short term task that we're trying to get them to accomplish, right? Right? When this is a long sustaining advisory board for something that's not going away anytime soon, right? Uh, you had a quick comment or?
Yeah, so one consideration here is our, you know, Counselor Pizzol obviously has, you know, a great value and skills that he could bring. But the the proposed change to the bylaws makes the council liaison to this committee, whoever that may be in the future, a voting member for forever. And so one idea could be, if there is concern, to just appoint Counselor Pizzol as a as a citizen. Right?
It it yeah, and yeah, so that's.
Does that does that make sense? Because this changing the bylaws with the language that's proposed would mean that, you know, twenty years from now, whoever is the liaison who may not have the same experience that he does would make them a voting member as well.
That that said, I just, now I'm gonna get pushed off the building. I just don't love the precedent
Yeah.
of counselors getting appointed to advisory committees in our capacity of a private, a private citizen.
Right. Well, because then it puts a, but Kathleen, I'm gonna pick on you for half a second. It would allow Kathleen then to sit on the parks board. Right? By doing that, it would allow her to sit on the parks board and then be the council, be on the council. She can sit as a private citizen, right? You'd want to be on the Arts Commission. I like where you're going.
Just takes away from the advisory component.
I expressed my growing doubts at the beginning of this discussion. And I I think signing with Lori and Kathleen may be the most prudent thing at this point in time.
Let me just say this. Why don't I just take myself off of it?
It isn't you.
No, no, I know. I get it. I get it. And I understand. That's not, it wasn't the point, and it wasn't something I was asking for. But I respect what Don was saying, right? And I know you and Rich know this, but um, it wasn't about that. I still will have blame me, I'll still have an impact, right? Like, so
You're still the liaison, right?
That's what I mean. And I'm not and I'm not worried about me as, you know, that's not, you know, I think I've grown up enough over the eighteen years I've been on the board. So um, as being on there to know that it's not that and it needs to go farther with out me as well.
Well, just to be really clear.
I don't, it's not, the whole thing is not.
Yeah.
I want to say I, you know, yes, Sandy Net, I'm has been part of that from day one. Don was there day one. But it's not about that. It's about, it's about Sandy Net and about the city of Sandy. It's not about me as an individual. So I mean, I can take myself off. I'll just, I don't want, I don't want to be fracturing the great things about Sandy Net. Sandy Net, I have to say. And so Don made a comment, we need to talk about the people we're interviewing or interviewing. And, you know, I get to, yeah, and I'm kind of doing it now. But what a great, amazing the people we're interviewing said, what these guys know.
One person moved to Sandy for Sandy.
Oh, seriously?
Oh, yeah. We hear that stories all the time, but to hear from why they picked out other cities and came here specifically for that. But not only that, the part about um, our employees and how they were just blown away by the over and above and beyond from in the middle of a forest fire and getting hooked up by moving to, you know, just the the help with taking off your shoes and coming in and calling them right back, you know, everything that incumbents in in large organizations, you know, these national brands is that we've always said that Sandy Net gets the most high touch of any department in the city of Sandy. And it came out in that interview, so those interviews, because they're in people's homes in their private spaces, right? And no other department gets that. And so just the people that team have is amazing. I just want to say a hundred percent of these people all agreed, like, in the fact and believed in that.
And I just, I, and we may go to a vote on this, but one thing I I do hope you you appreciate and understand, Jeremy, is that the reason that this conversation went on so long, and the reason it was so hotly debated is it's we all immensely understand the value that you bring to this committee. And we all, I think, if we could just pick you to be a voting member and then just know that that just ends with you and then we just move on, I think you got a unanimous vote for that tonight, right? We all highly respect what you bring us. And what have you have done?
No, I I really appreciate it. And that's why specifically I did not want to bring that up me personally.
All right. Is there a motion for the council?
I'll make a motion. Uh, before I do, uh, we're generally on consensus to take the voting number out.
Yeah.
Uh, I make a motion that, well, the first motion is I make a motion that we accept, let me get back up to the names. Colin Sheridan, Don Williams, Gregory Friedtage, I'm saying that right, Michael Horder, Joe Smith and Joel. Joel Brock. Brunchy, got it right. For the Sandy Turn, uh, advisory, Sandy Net Advisory Board for the terms described.
For a second.
Awesome.
And there's a motion by Counselor Sheldon, a second by Counselor Pete told. And all those are favor signified by saying aye or provide me a thumbs up.
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the mayor, thumbs down. Motion carries.
I'll make a second motion to accept the Sandy Net Advisory Board bylaws. But striking out the part that the council liaison shall be a voting she'll remember. That section.
Is very motion. There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion by Counselor Sheldon, a second by Counselor Hokinson. All those with favor signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up.
Aye.
Oppose, the mayor, thumbs down. Motion carries. All right. Waste water treatment plant improvements project schedule update. Thank you, Greg. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
And thank you to all of our committee members for for your service.
I counsel the so tonight we're updating you on the wastewater treatment plant project or improvements to the treatment plant, the work that we have Westios doing the design and engineering and Slayton as the general contractor. The purpose of tonight is to give you an update on the delays to the project schedule, um, which is sort of heartbreaking, but have a good reason behind Brittany Park with our with Leeway Engineering, our owners rep is in attendance tonight. Can answer questions. Um, she put together a fantastic memo that kind of explains um, the the project schedule delay um, and some of the options that the team explored. We presented the schedule to the Oversight Committee earlier this month and explained the situation and the different options. And so I think I'll deliver the good news. Uh, the good news is that um, the majority of the project is still on track despite, you know, the very ambitious timeline and uh, the work that Brittany's been doing uh, to kind of put pressure on the Slayton team to get this project um, on tracked and and completed this year. The issue that we have run into is pandemic related with the supply chain, the shipping delays, things that would take three to four weeks to get here and fabricated for a plant are projected to be, you know, twelve weeks. So despite our our best effort to do things like the CMGC process, early procurement packages um, and multiple GMPs, uh, we're just faced with uh, being stuck in the clog of these um, supply chain issues. So uh, like I said, the good news is the majority of the project, three, you know, what, three quarters of the project will still be on target. The the consequence is that what we think is the best option is leaving one aeration basin and one um, clarifier until the following summer. And that means, uh, so we have two of those, of each of those. Uh, so the plant uh, will have half of the improvements done. Or at least ha- uh, one iteration and one clarifier done uh, before the next wet weather season. Uh, in addition to other work like electrical and other equipment that will be done as well. This will put us in the best position to be um, within our permit, um, you know, performance of the plant. Some of the other options that Brittany looked at uh, with Slayton and Westios would put us at a little more risk of the plant. You know, maybe having some trouble um, with our our permits and maybe expose us during times of very wet weather. So we think our best approach is to kind of split the project up to do the the majority of the work um, as as it's scheduled. And then come back and finish um, in the summer of two thousand twenty-two, uh, when we switch back over to the the nursery discharge to finish the aeration train um, and the other clarifier. The Oversight Committee heard this information, got the report, uh, agreed with that recommendation. Uh, we also met with DQ to make sure that they were informed about this. Um, you know, they understood the situation, the predicament. You know, I I said it was heartbreaking because of all the work that, you know, the council has put into and staff of trying to get this all wrapped up by November. Um, and uh, we were pretty close uh, until we just got this, every everybody's finding um, finding out about the this issue with the the supply train chains and the in the shipping. So um, that the purpose of tonight really is to inform, uh, present these options and a recommendation and and council kind of accepting the schedule and ask any questions about the other options and what else we looked at. If, and again, Brittany's here tonight to to answer questions that you might have.
One thing I just start to say is, if you don't know about our supply chain problems in this country or in this world, you've been hiding under a rock. We do have a wastewater project oversight committee. All right. So I'm not trying to tell anyone not to ask questions or anything. We're on council. We all got elected to do that. But we also have things like wastewater project oversight committees. So also vet and give recommendations to this body as well, right? So with that, is there any questions or anything on 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 this before we approve the the new timeline? All right. Is there a motion? Uh, it's just a suggestion motion is to accept the revised project schedule for the wastewater treatment.
I move that we accept the revised edition of the current status.
Is there a second?
A second, though.
There's a
Revised project schedule for the wastewater treatment plant improvement.
That I said.
My Counselor Exner, a second by Counselor Hokinson to accept the revised project schedule for the wastewater treatment improvements project. All those in favor signify by saying aye. The thumbs up. Thank you. Oppose, the mayor, thumbs down. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Brittany. Thanks for hanging out, Rudy.
Thank you.
Uh, with that, Jordan, you're up.
In person live. In person live. It's good to see everybody. Um, Mayor, thank you for your question about the reopening status. Hope you found that informative. We are on target for uh, July one, our library reopening to to our normal hours beyond just the four hours a day. City Hall expanding hours. Um, you know, we got a slate of um, events and activities planned for the summer. I want to say thanks to the the committee and Counselor Exner has been participating on the hundred and tenth celebration committee, which probably has information to share, but uh, we're looking forward to a two week celebration of events and activities coming up in August uh, for the hundred and tenth. Um, and really the events are going to kick off here in a couple of weeks with our Fourth of July fireworks. So I want to say thank you to Clackamas County Bank for sponsoring this event. Again, it's great to come back um, uh, this year and be able to have this. You know, really, it's, uh, you know, they're sponsoring it and the school district, thanks to them for allowing us to put the show on on their property. So um, you know, looking forward to that. And the fire fire department will be on but standby uh, as we look at the heat, um, you know, for the next couple of weeks. A quick update on the American Rescue Plan um, Act and the funding there. The recent calculations are now we're at two point five million. Uh, so good news. Uh, maybe that will continue to tick up. We had a meeting with the Clack, uh, Clackamas County Cities um, last week to kind of share our ideas and what's going on. We're all in, um, you know, similar company right now of kind of waiting and seeing, getting better guidance. There's some, you know, great draft guidance out. A lot of cities are planning for the same thing, holding some money for infrastructure. Um, you know, thinking about additional COVID expenses, uh, thinking about other grants and and support um, uh, programs. But we also haven't received any money yet. Uh, so we think that's coming in July. The state uh, has not released any of that money to uh, the non entitlement cities. They're under fifty thousand uh, population. And then uh, this next, uh, the next city council meetings on Tuesday, I wanted to remind council of that. It's going to be Tuesday, Jan, uh, July sixth, um, as we observe the Fourth of July holiday. So we'll be back here live in person. And I think tonight went really well in terms of the test run.
Yeah.
Considering what Jeff is juggling and what Greg's team has put together here um, and using this technology. You know, that there were some public comments tonight, um, and it is something that we're not alone as a city. You know, Sandy is on the map in in terms of the the things that we've been kind of dealing with over the last year, but so are many other cities. You heard one example of, you know, the unfortunate brawl that happened in Oregon City. Uh, it's something that, you know, you know, I really take those comments seriously. Um, it's concerning and um, I actually was, you know, it's quite moving to hear teenagers, you know, come out and have the courage to say, you know, say those things and their compelling stories. Our police department will be there to ensure safety. That's our number one priority for these thing, uh, for these events that happen. And especially for minors that are involved too, and make sure that they feel safe to be able to express their um, their rights. And, you know, I I know there's there is tension out there about this. And again, like, we are going to go back to a permitting system with a plaza. And and we know we want to stop people from exercising their rights, but we want to make sure that they're doing it safely. And everybody feels like they have a safe place in Sandy to express their, um, you know, their feelings and their rights and and their speech. I I I don't have any advice for council on this one. You know, this is a leadership, you know, sort of conversation, you know, the council could have, the community can have. I think it's playing out, um, you know, in terms of these events and and how the community is is, you know, you know, coming out in support. Um, and, you know, some of the comments we heard tonight. And we'll again, as a city, continue to make sure people are safe in doing that. We'll have police presence there. And, you know, ensure their safety. And again, I I just thought it was really courageous to hear those students, you know, talk tonight and then great for them. And and having the courage to stand it up and and speaking tonight. And uh, yeah, with that, I'll my report.
Thank you, Jordan.
Appreciate it.
Uh, Counselor Hokinson.
Thanks. Uh, this is really cool to be here and to, I feel like we went through ten times as much things and discussion today than we do in a same equivalent time in a Zoom meeting. So this this is neat. I I also uh, was moved by the uh, the testimony today. I've I've heard from several of these people in the the last few months about some sharing some of the concerns either on our council mail or or other things. And, you know, I acknowledge that I don't necessarily walk in those shoes and under And, you know, I acknowledge that I don't necessarily walk in those shoes and understand the lives and the challenges that some of these LGBT LGBTQ community and others go through. But I'm learning. I've got a sister-in-law who runs two shelters for, for youth. It, in, uh, in the Utah area and, um, she's helping my education, you know, the sister-in-law. I think and they've had a number of these rallies, um, coming up to now, and I haven't been able to make any because of my schedule this weekend. I'm going to be around, so I'll be there. And, uh, I think just being there, you know, uh, maybe, maybe that's, that's a step. Certainly, uh, I personally don't condone the types of intimidation tactics. I think that's from an era that was long time ago and doesn't belong in our modern society. Now we need, we need to exercise. We need to be the tolerant ones. We need to exhibit tolerance. And strongly encourage others to be very tolerant, respectful. So maybe we'll see, uh, see a few people there. And maybe we can figure it out what we can do as a council.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Exner.
Yeah, unfortunately I'm not gonna be a talker today, so I'm trying to keep it quickly. I'm not also was impacted by the public folks that came in. We do not have any business having intimidation going on in our community. I, I stopped the reason why I live here at Sandy. I, I live here in Sandy. Cause my grandkids can be here safe. My kids can be here safe. And I can be here safe. And my friends and those folks who are in the city, whether they're from the city or they come to the city to enjoy things. So I think I'll leave it at that, but that certainly is not something that Sandy should tolerate. Oh, so in excitement of this coming up, we are having 110th year anniversary. It's, it's going to be the 28th of August. Uh, there'll be a number of different things going on. Uh, our friend DJ Anderson will be emceeing it. Uh, there'll be a mural celebration because one of our local artists are finishing up and we'll try to finish it up by that time. Chalk art going on, reverse parade we're proposing to do. And a number of other things that are happening. One thing that I would like to suggest, and I haven't the money yet figured out in my head, but since there is no art committee. And I've had several people tell me that the Plaza statue at the center of the plaza has seen a lot of corrosion. I would like to bring a, a budget or two from some, from some of the people around that can clean that and get it ready. So that we can have a nice cleanly well done. And I understand from the artisans that are putting that together that some corrosion adds to the artisticness of it, but that we've gone beyond that. So what I would like to do is bring a proposal of maybe some kind of money, what it would take to clean that up by this August 28th. That sounds like something that would be maybe just a straw poll about, if that's something of interest, you could at least get a chance to see what that cost would be. Like to do that.
Corrosion where?
Corrosion on the fish in that statue.
Didn't, didn't arts, the arts committee, didn't they have a budget?
They did, uh, but you know, if it's okay for me to, I don't know what the money might be. It might be a thousand dollars. It might be 500, but I don't know. Toothbrush on the side by a bunch of teenagers. Who knows? Uh, but I, I'd like to do that and make it part of that city's contribution to making sure that the plaza is in its top shape. That sounds like a straw pole. Feels good then great. The B.
So. How much it costs?
I'd like to know how much it costs.
Let's see what it costs.
I guess which city staff is going to help you do that.
I can buy a toothbrush.
Let's all just get out there, work project.
OTA had a lot of work project students.
I want to get this done quickly. I've got a number of things I want to put through and figure out. The B committee thing, um, seemed to have lots and lots of great input. We did go, uh, the mayor and I put together a video here. It was an excellent one, I thought, and it committed the sixth and seventh graders within our Oregon Trail School District to put up uh, about 90 proposals about what we could do to help our B city thing happen. And I have had a chance to review some of them. The committee itself has thought that there may be, we could reduce it down a few, uh, some of them are duplicative. The Parks and Trails Committee has had a representative in that and, uh, they're going to continue to interact with the Parks and Trail. My guess is that Parks and Trail will be very involved in that as it goes along. So a lot of fun there, a lot of things that are happening. I won't tell you about all the names and what people were suggesting, but there's some really interesting things that are going on there. So what I would like to do is also get extra po about saying, thank you for all the participation for our school district. To be involved in presenting all these ideas. I, I think it's a, it's a cool thing to get the schools and the city together in some projects like some of these. We don't always do that. Some things, you know, that have happened in the past. I want to bring up the baggage, but there've been some things that have kept us from being together. And this is kind of seems like it's drawn us together. So I would like to write a letter, maybe written by the mayor, said, thank you for contributing. We'll evaluate them as we go through the year. It's not something happy done right away. The evaluation of deciding we want to do something. It's just, I would like to recognize all 90 some odd kids for all their efforts.
Chad finally worked on some.
Thank you. And I'm not sure where this one's going to go. If I put my foot into it, then tell me and I'll shut up right away. I understand there was appraisal done here recently. Do we have any, um, consequences of that? Should I just do that? Then you can tell me at some other time, or can we talk about it?
That's, uh. Well, we probably have.
Okay. All right. Um, I have made a, a couple of presentations of wastewater treatment plant status and things, do some smaller groups. Couple of the watershed, um, that entail Clackamas River and Sandy River. It's been a very interesting time. Got a lot of feedback from the Rosal Lake one too. Probably the biggest response from the Rosal Lake was, and I heard was they'd like to have some more information. People are not completely informed on this, what's going on. So I, I think it'd be well worth us to set up some more into our public involvement group. We've talked about that. And I've been on that conversation a little bit too. Uh, the, the ones that I have done, just because it happened to be some people I know and have asked that I presented, I borrowed some, some boards from Jordan and, um, I think it's gone well, but it's been, I think I told him it was medium hot. There were several people. Again, some of the things that we wanted to do, but also, uh, I've been hearing people have been wanting to be involved and get part of the process. And some of these have been mostly, I think these have been the people outside the city itself, but I'd like to see us get more city of Sandy citizens involved in some of these information, things and responses. Just don't hear that for some reason. We don't get the city people so far. So anyway, um, that has gone relatively well and I appreciate the patience for folks letting me do that because I was going to do it anyway, whether you liked it or not. And that's it.
All right. Thank you, sir. Kathleen.
Hi. I am really excited about the library opening July 1st fully. So I think, um, they're already doing a ton of activities for kids, teens and everybody else. And they're going to be even busier once they open. I'm really appreciative of Clackamas County Bank providing our fireworks. And I would like to make, make a suggestion that we maybe buy them some flowers and a card that gets signed by the council, possibly the city manager, just personally thanking.
She dropped out about 15 minutes ago also. So. Yeah. Can we go back to her? Okay. It will come back. Rich.
Yeah. So August 28th. It was mon- it's a modified one, I understand.
Oh, it's happening.
It's happening. Yeah. So you're just going to see like your transitions, some of that stuff. You won't have the people gathering and whatnot, but the, the size is the same.
They're going to make it longer, I understand because it's separating out the starting time. You can't do it. Step on somebody else's.
Uh, so actually, uh, I finally made contact, uh, with the chamber. So.
I heard it went gray.
Yeah. It was really in, and I got to do it in person. So I guess that was a good thing. But anyways, I'd like to put out, um, they're starting back up some events. The first Wednesday. Morning Park is at the ant farm, which is from 7:30 to nine. So I'm putting this out because they're very interested in having council people. So second Wednesday is called Reach. I apologize. I didn't put that acronym, but, uh, didn't put that down. Uh, it's going to be at various locations. Uh, reach out to Chris Jones if you're interested, but it's from four to six 30 in the evening. Third Wednesday is Good Morning Sandy. Again, at various locations, they try to hit all the different, um, different chamber people. Seven 30 to eight 30. And then the fourth Wednesday is Lunch and Learn from 11:30 to, uh, one o'clock. And then Wire Chamber at Mountain Mocha occurs after the morning.
Jordan, what we try to get, uh, now that we're opening, let's have a city show, leadership role in some of this. And maybe as a member of the chamber, we try to participate in one of these, hosting one of these activities.
Yeah.
And let's do counselors here, you know.
Planning Commission is right now, which is nice, summer.
I'm back.
Where was Kathleen? Where, where was she? Card for Clackamas County Bank. We lost you there.
Okay. All right. And then just, um, I'm also going on the record saying I don't welcome folks that limit the rights of LGBTQ or other races or anything. They're not welcome in Sandy as far as I'm concerned. On the use of the public plaza, I am curious how we're going to deal with unpermitted use, especially on days when use has already been issued a permit. So I'd like to hear maybe next meeting, how that gets handled, um, when people want to use it without a permit. Or crash somebody else's use. So I'm all regarding the Plaza statue, um, I'd like to make sure that we reach out to the folks that made the statue. So that, you know, we're using the right materials or whatever.
He's local. Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. So he'll know what to do to, you know, you don't want to ruin it like Antiques Roadshow or something and use the wrong product or something. Anyways, um, and then I also want to encourage our planning staff to, um, really look at, you know, I've been kind of looking at some comparable code language from successful communities. To update some of, and close the loops in our planning code. And there's some really good stuff out there. I'm hoping that they're able to kind of just, you know, not have to recreate the wheel and just use some of that existing code in other ci- cities that have some exa- excellent examples. So other than that, um, I'm just out of town, but I'll be back in a couple of days. So we'll see you soon.
Thank you. Uh, Rich, were you done?
Yes.
Okay. Laura.
All right. Um, let's see, parks. Their meeting was super short, um, last week. Kind of the main concern right now, um, is there's some salmon berry and blackberry infestation takeover, whatever you want to call it. Where Tremble did all the logging on the east side of the trail. So, uh, they're trying to figure out how they're going to combat that because it's pretty prolific. If you've been on the trail recently, it's, they're definitely taking over in that section. So, um, last year you could walk through there. This year you can't. So, um, that would probably be an ongoing issue for us. Find out, then of course there's money attached to dealing with that. So, um, you may have noticed yet, if you were in town yesterday, that, uh, we had some, uh, we had some smoke. So everybody thought we were having a local fire because every, everyone's a hyper aware now. There's a fire in Warm Springs, if you didn't know. And so we get that inversion, which is common this time of year and a little bit of wind blew all the smoke in town. So that's kind of what that was. Uh, and then lastly, I participated, um, last week in Career Day at Cedar Ridge. And if you guys have ever not had the opportunity to do that, I highly suggest that you, I can hook you up or, um, you know, talk to the principal at Cedar Ridge because it's, uh, what a great group of kids. They asked some great questions. It's about two hours. Uh, I did it. It was kind of cool to do it from Zoom this time. There were pros and cons because usually I take a fire engine in the school and we do this whole, this whole song and dance. And this year it was on Zoom. But from the kid's perspective, I think they asked more questions because I don't think it was quite as intimidating to be with a live human being in all that stuff, you know? And then the second thing I think was really cool with the Zoom is I, they had like twice as many people involved. Everybody from Nike shoe designers to people in foreign countries that were able to zoom in for them. So a pretty cool experience for, uh, for the eighth graders at Cedar Ridge. That's all me.
Just a couple of things. The chlorine shortage that's going on around here. I know you sent out an email, but, um, did a little Googling myself. You say you were meeting with other cities around the county, county as well. And what's the feeling out there? I didn't know about this until, uh, you've mentioned some, I started Googling, every pool owner is concerned and pools may have no chlorine. So as well, not I'd rather drink water, but sorry.
Yeah.
But it, what?
Yeah, that's how it started. Uh, well, sort of the information got out was people with local swimming pools, uh, started to feel like they're going to be curtailed, right? Getting chlorine on their own pools. We're fortunate that we have, you know, as a supplier of wastewater and water, we have a backlog with the, the only that has, uh, 30 days on hand, 35 for our water. So we feel like we're in a pretty good position. Some cities down are down to like two weeks. The plant that went down is supposed to be back up. You know, another week or two. So we'll continue to monitor that. Obviously, that, you know, Veolia is a big company, has that contingency plan and everything as well. But no, we've been, you know, approached by a lot of the, the state associations, other cities and everything about assembling our plants and kind of communicating that to the governor's office, especially about these situations. Uh, we need to declare emergencies and things like that, but, uh, we feel like we're so far in pretty good shape, but especially that equipment failure that happened at that chemical plant will be back up.
Pool committee, uh, salt.
Taste bad. I know. Yeah, thanks. Uh, and, and I thought it was electrical thing to their machinery or was it? The only reason I ask is there's so much cyber hacking and those type of things going on with some of these big things like pipelines and others. Do you know what?
I don't know the full details.
Okay. Sorry, I was on bad internet. Sun River on my phone and it was not helping me out figuring out more of the story, but. Um, outdoor structures, I noticed, uh, some more being built. Looks great. I'm, I'm super happy for, happy and, uh, you know, there's a business that opens up one week and then you shut down, you know, I mean, just talk about investment or community and business. So, um, it'll be a great attraction as well to them. So can we get an update on the homeless camping policy that's being passed by the state? For the state of Oregon to kind of, I guess, trump whatever may be rescinded.
It's in the state law, which, you know, the courts have ruled. Uh, we actually have a meeting tomorrow, uh, to review the draft. Or that's what we have, we're going to bring from the council, but I was debating whether to include in my update tonight. I do want to schedule a meeting with Counselor Sheldon at Smallwood. We wanted to take care of our ordinance first before having the task force. I think we're going to have the homeless task force with, uh, the counselors. But we, I was going to ask if there's a time coming up pretty soon to start that rolling. So we do want to get that back on council schedule.
Yeah, just let me, shoot me some days and I'll let you know what, I'm available.
Yeah, it, part of that is reviewing the, the state law and how that's affecting our work.
Yeah, because I, as I read it, there are some things that cities could take that could help out in that. But I mean, it costs money, invest money to, you know, help with the situation, but I just didn't know where that, because that's coming into effect starting in January 1st.
2023.
2020.
Two.
Yeah.
2022. So this next January 1.
Okay. Okay.
So anyways, I just don't want to be creeping up on us and we haven't talked about it. Pickleball is coming to Cedar Ridge and, uh, I know there's a lot of excited people for that, uh, my parents included. Is it's a hot item amongst a certain generation group and younger. Um, it's a lot of fun sport. I was over in Sun River and, and tennis courts were empty, pickleball courts were awful. No one wants to play tennis. After playing a little tennis, I'd rather go back to pickleball. Like, as a runner, my knees are not, do not go side to side very easy. But anyways, uh, coming there, I guess we'll be able to rent, not rent, pay a fee to be part of the pickleball, whatever. Lead or owner of the password to open up the, the uh, cabinet to pull the pickleball nets out and, and use it, uh, small membership fee, I guess, is what Carol was explaining to me. So anyways, uh, great to hear that because I know I've had years for, years and years of that, that one. Because being part of uh, the parks uh, lays on for many years. On the way back, uh, speaking of parks, um, I know it's in our master plan for a pump track. But Redman, you see the pump track, uh, as you're coming through on Redman, finally stopped. It was only like ninety-five degrees, so it didn't last long. On the way back today and we spent our whole spring break at a pump track up in Leavenworth, Washington. Kids love it. It is amazing. It's not like any other. Skate park or those type of things. It uh, really well done. Redman has a really nice facility of it. So when seeing that on our own master plan is a real, they uh, right side. I think it's also the way they placed it right on the highway, getting a track, people to stop. And then, oh, just down the street, there's a lot of restaurants and brew pubs and, and that's where all the parents hanging out. On a ninety-five degree day, there weren't very many kids either, but it's, it's pretty amazing if done right. So the only nearest one we've looked up around here like this is that uh, I eighty-four, two oh five area, which is um, kind of sketchy to, to let go down there uh, for your kids. So. Anyway, and then um, I don't know, C four been meeting? I haven't heard anything from C four uh, data, what may be going on there. Same old, same old.
The last one was on tolling.
Yeah, they're talking about.
No one's for.
Toll roads and updating.
Oh, I, I spent like eight, nine years on it. But some of the other topics come up, you know, and we're, look at the, uh, the new laws and passages for homeless or, or constructions as well. Sometimes that comes up there too, so. That's all.
All right, thank you. Uh, so for my report, to start with this uh, Sandy stand-up movement, some of the stuff going on this weekend, you know, it's someone who first got civically active and stuff as a youth high schooler in Sandy, uh, you know, I'm um, you know, I'm really proud of the courage that a lot of these students take to stand up and to come forward and, and advocate, you know, so strongly for, for their beliefs and lifestyles. Um, you know, I, I think though that, yeah, I'm also very opposed to the fear and intimidation tactics that I see here in this community. Uh, but we really need to continue to have a safe and welcoming place for all, you know? Um, and you know, uh, whether we're greatly opposed or greatly for, you know, the demonstration, I think it's just really important that people understand that, you know, we are a open and welcoming society, especially here in Sandy as a community and that our local government, our police department's going to work to ensure a safe environment for everybody to have. I think that's the most important. So uh, Fourth of July, incredibly excited about our Fourth of July coming up and having fireworks again. Uh, thank you to Clackamas County Bank uh, for your continued partnership with our city on putting that event on. Uh, in-person meetings. This is awesome. I think we got through some of this actually a lot faster than we would have otherwise. It's a pretty meaty schedule. But it's just great, like going back and forth in person uh, with all of you. It's, it's been great. This Thursday at four thirty over at Ria's, we're going to have a ribbon cutting. Um, and I think a lot of councilors want to be here because it's for the, over the uh, outdoor structure that went up there. Should be pretty fun. Think she's got some food and different things there. So four thirty Thursday. Um, and then I know you mentioned La Happy just had one out there. I did a little drive around, went talked to Bill over at Lori Brewing. I mean, all these business owners are so excited about uh, this program and it coming out and everyone around the community is getting excited about it. Um, and with that, just uh, thank you, everybody. It's great seeing everybody in person and we'll go ahead and adjourn tonight's meeting.
Awesome.
Next time.
Oh, Wednesday, Wednesday for the ribbon cutting.
Oh, it's Wednesday?
Krista sent me a text.
She was quick on that.
No, she was fast. It's Wednesday.